All right, we'll come back to order and would the clerk please call the rule to reestablish a quorum?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item forty-three is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Folsom Boulevard at Cottage Way Sidewalk Infill Project. I do need a motion to drop two of the four properties. So property number two is the Three Oaks Properties LLC located at 2100 Fulton Avenue.
I'll move to drop.
A second. Do you vote?
Oops. Sorry. Can you please vote again? Unanimous vote. And then I'll also need a second motion to drop Three Oaks Properties Limited Partnership located at 2132 Fulton Avenue.
I'll move.
Unanimous vote. And so that leaves two properties remaining. The first property is the Ramirez Apartments located at 9425 Folsom Boulevard.
What? Didn't we just drop the two Foltons?
Folsom.
No, Folsom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Folsom Boulevard.
Annunciation. Okay.
Yes, Folsom Boulevard. 9425.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager for Acquisitions with our Real Estate Division. And I'm here today to introduce this item which recommends a board approval for four resolutions in necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Folsom Boulevard and Cottage Way sidewalk project. The Folsom Boulevard project, portion of the project involves the construction of new improvements including Class Two bicycle lanes, separated sidewalks with landscaping, improved drainage infrastructure, and driveway elevation conforms on private property. The Cottage Way portion of the project involves the construction of new improvements including Class Two bicycle lanes, sidewalks, improved drainage infrastructure, and driveway elevation conforms on private property. The purpose of the project is to establish a safer environment for all modes of transportation and create a more attractive, functional, and publicly inviting corridor. Of the nine acquisitions required for the project, four properties were originally subject to this board item. However, the Real Estate Division has recently reached agreements with the two owners of the affected properties, leaving two properties for which the resolutions or necessity are required. The remaining two properties are located in different neighborhoods within Sacramento County. The Ramirez Apartments LLC property is located at 9425 Folsom Boulevard in Sacramento between Mayhew Road to the west and Butterfield Way to the east. The Thomas D. and Laura Lee Armstrong, husband and wife, as joint tenants property is located at 2100 Kincaid Way in the Cottage Park area in Sacramento. Both of the subject properties are currently developed with single-family residences. The property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of permanent public facilities and utilities easement and temporary construction easements needed for the project across portions of the two affected properties. The county obtained appraisals for each of the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of various easements I just mentioned. The county's negotiations with the remaining property owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure necessary easement interests in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolutions in necessity and anticipated and eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet along with the owner and contact histories. Notice of intention to seek approval for the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least fifteen days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members here are available to address those for you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. So the Folsom Boulevard project is, I went by it yesterday and I couldn't tell from the street addresses, is this the undeveloped property or is this the developed property with actually the apartments on it west of Butterfield?
This is the undeveloped property with the large single residence kind of in the middle of the property.
Right, in the middle. You've got a field out front there.
Correct.
So that's the piece of property. And that was the one that actually had a subdivision approved for. We went through quite a bit of deliberation at the board level. That map has expired?
Correct.
Expired recently, about a year ago, I think. Maybe not.
I think, yeah, maybe it was a little bit longer than that.
It was a little longer. I know they got extensions because of the recession and so forth, so. So we did not, there's no existing additional right-of-way in there. That would have been received at the time if that map had only been finalized and then something had been constructed. But we're having to acquire the right-of-way for this, and I say it's not a vacant, there is the single-family home. I don't, the Ramirezes don't occupy the home, though, do they?
No. The Ramirez LLC apartments LLC is, I think, simply just a vesting title named entity. I'm not reflective of the ownership's.
All right. So there was no previous dedication along Folsom Boulevard that would have had an IOD that would have taken it to a point further into the property?
My understanding is if the owner, previous owner, had gone forward with that map that was contemplated back in 2007, there would be requirements for dedication resultant from development.
Right. But what about, so that lot hasn't been subdivided any time since we took improvements for Folsom Boulevard? I mean, basically their property line comes right out to, well, not quite edge of pavement, but there's not much shoulder there at all, so.
Correct.
All right. And then, I couldn't tell from the history here that has, what's been the most recent contact? You could get no response. I see February you reached out.
Yes, and I believe there was a reach out in March and we have not, my officer has not heard from the property owner respectively. There was some dialogue earlier on and then in the last couple of weeks, we have not heard anything from the property owner.
Okay, so we are basically going to construct all the frontage improvements, though, for this property now?
Correct.
Which would have, under previous map, been constructed. And I don't know if they'd been in the right spot for this project, but they would have been constructed. So in addition to acquiring the working easement and the area needed for the improvements, we're going to do all the improvements, put the sidewalk and curb gutter. And what about the driveway issue? Because that previous development had, if I'm not mistaken, and I just talked about here, had a couple of access points on to the, how are we going to deal with that? Are you just putting straight sidewalk and that any future development would have to make a sidewalk, make a sidewalk cut? Or are you going to construct at least one driveway?
That's my understanding, that there will be a driveway constructed to service the existing residents, but the contemplation of what the subdivision map would put there in the future if it were to go forward is not part of our project.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? I have no speaker slips on this, I believe.
Move the item.
Second. Do we need to have two? We're going to just, number one first?
This is for the, yes, 9425 Folsom Boulevard.
Okay. Right. We're going to do two motions.
I got the two motions. What for? Because we're dropping?
We already took two separate motions to drop those other two properties and then we need.
You said Folsom again. I keep hearing Fulton.
Oh, yeah, I said Folsom. Yeah, we're going to, this, what you just made a motion on is for Folsom.
So this, first vote is on the Ramirez Apartments LLC?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Now we will take up the Thomas D. and Laura Lee Armstrong property.
On Kincaid Way. Correct.
Is there a motion? Chair will make the motions, or a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a couple of minutes before we can take the next item.
Okay, then we just got a card for the, for an off-agenda item. Mr. Gale?
Yes. Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurlong Way, North Highland. A resident for four-and-plus years. I've been there quite well at several times. The court enforcement officers have been there writing up statements as to my fence. It's metal and wood and he's not specific as to what's wrong with it. I think the bill has become a thousand dollars, I think he's seeing the charges on it. Undoubtedly, the person is not, undoubtedly his colorblind or whatever, never took art, never dug mathematics or none of that. And I've got many compliments on my fence how well it's done. I've used materials that come from trees and they never grow forever after you cut them. And that's what I've used. And I don't know whether Jackson Paulette or whatever, but this guy, I don't think is expert on either one of those. And if it was possible, I would like to invite the board, you can't come at all at once, I don't think, to see what's wrong with the fence. Great compliments on it. Said, wow, really creative, what have you. Constantly he writes, and the person in charge of the court enforcement never answers the phone. He's not available. What do you need to talk to him about? I would like to see them. And I would like to invite the board to come to my house, 7336, see inside and outside. Duncan Pfeiffer and other stuff is inside, but not on the outside. That it's getting to be the same person who wrote a letter twenty-some years ago. I got the whole thing. Undoubtedly, they liked my house or something. I never borrowed a cup of salt or sugar or nothing. And my wife had pretty good salaries and took care of children. And you can go through the place in the morning, you think it's a marshalling place for trucks and whatever you see there coming around West Burn and Hurlong. You can hardly go there, cars for sale, et cetera. But this individual doesn't seem to see that. And I need relief. I'm tempted to get a lawyer, but I think it should be settled other than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And just for the record, Mr. Gale, the property you're talking about is at 7336 Hurlong Way?
That's correct. I've been there for four-and-plus years plus.
Thank you, sir. And we were caught up.
Okay, item forty-four. I do need a motion to drop this item from the agenda. This is the Capitol Public Radio Fee Waiver. Request for a fee waiver for the use permit located at 7351 Eagles Nest Road.
So move. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And here we are again.
Okay, and now we have another break.
Yes, we do. I guess we'll just take a thirteen-minute recess. All right, we'll come back to order. The separate category supervisors, the clerk please call the rule one more time.
Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Natoli. Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, for your 230 item, item forty-five, this is the 3929 Minnesota Avenue Appeal of a Tree Violation in the Fair Oaks Community.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, the County Planning Director, here to give the staff presentation. No PowerPoint, just a verbal presentation today.
If you could wait to approach, that's all right. That's all right.
That is the appellant, so I assume we'll take the staff presentation first and then we'll give the appellant an opportunity to come address the board.
Yes.
So we did provide your board with a staff report. Staff is recommending denial of the requested tree appeal. Mr. Andrade is appealing payment of an $11,400 fee related to impacts to three protected oak trees at 3929 Minnesota Avenue. It includes trenching, grading, and fill of one tree, improper construction of a driveway affecting a tree, and removal of a third tree. The history is a building permit was issued in January of 2015. Planning staff received complaints from neighbors beginning in June of 2017. Our staff went out and conducted a site visit and found impacts to two protected trees. Those impacts are documented visually in attachment two to your board report. Staff, as we typically do, placed a hold on the final issuance of the building permit. And we also provided Mr. Andrade with email correspondence, which is in your report as attachment three, documenting the violations, directing future compliance with protective tree measures, and requiring a site plan to begin the permit process and to allow calculation of the tree replacement fees. Per staff indicate that there were multiple phone calls in this timeframe. Mr. Andrade indicates that he was, had a difficulty and was not able to successfully contact planning staff. In May 2018, a third tree was removed without a required tree permit. In October 2018, the applicant sought to finalize the building permit, but there was this hold that planning had due to the violation. There was contact between the applicant and staff. Staff resent the original violation information. In the absence of the originally requested materials, including a site plan, staff met with the real estate agent, Mr. Hurley, on the site on October 30th, 2018. Staff verbally estimated the tree impacts and the applicants were seeking a means to reduce the fee. And the only thing that we could, that staff could think of was having them pay directly to the Tree Foundation to avoid a minor $350 IT fee, which is a pretty small component of the overall cost. After not hearing back, staff invoiced the amount on November 20th, 2018. Mr. Andrade did seek to work with per-management staff and over a period after November and December and January, repeatedly requesting to reduce the fee amount. And I believe we have correspondents requesting approximately 50% fee reduction. However, there are no provisions in the ordinance to reduce the fee. My first contact with Mr. Andrade was on February 15th of 2019, and I have a written record that the per-manager briefed me in mid-February about the issues with a request to reduce the fee amount. And I similarly concluded that there was no provision to reduce the fee amount. Mr. Andrade did pay his fees on March 6th, 2019 and also made arrangements to file for this appeal due to loss of monies, due to untimely response by the county employee, and not getting due process. So Mr. Andrade does feel that there was a lack of response on the part of county staff and is requesting you waive the appeal fee. And again, staff recommends denial due to lack of staff error. Any questions upstairs?
Questions?
Not a moment. Maybe hear from the property owner.
We'll hear from the afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a little anxiety. This has got me a little mad, so I apologize. I'm a little fidgety and tried my best to keep my, I'm not, this has cost me a lot of money and it's not just due to this issue with the county. It's just the getting, just a timely response. And the thing is, I'm going to skip way ahead to the point, I'm going to say, okay, the tree violations, one of the little gas lines where we dug, we had it, PG&E broke. The gas line was broke. It had to be dug up. That was the only place it can be. That's where it was at. Had to be replaced. One hand is the, I figure the county had, we have a permit. The county came over, signed that off, told us we had to fill it with sand, put the thing that PG&E came back in, filled it up. She gave us an order to stop work. I called her, called her, called her, couldn't get in touch with her. I went to John Dorborough, which is the boss, talked to him. I went to Todd Newington, which is on the counter, talked to him. I went for days at a time, every week, because, keep in mind, we were in contract to sell the property, but we couldn't sell the property without a final, without, and they had a hold on our final, which is fine. So I went through, contacted them. John Dorborough, again, hey, can we get ahold of Claire Williams? Todd Newington called Claire Williams. John Dorborough called Claire Williams. They all called Claire Williams. Voicemail was full. They did an inner-office memo or whatever they did. She got ahold of Todd Newington. She still, well, now, let me back up. I actually, yeah, no, that's right. She got ahold of Todd Newington. She set it up to where she can meet Dave Hurley. Dave Hurley is actually an owner on the property as well, at the property. She met Dave Hurley at the property. Dave explained to her, Warren, we need to get this done. What can we do? What's the fastest way? She said, you're going to have to pay $11,000. Fine, well, ready, just send the paperwork to us. She did not send the paperwork to us. I went into the county the next day, went down to Gady's office and said, hey, work, can I, I need to pay this. We haven't got it yet. They called her again. No luck. Came back every week for two months, a month and a half. Came back every week, tried to call her, could not do it. The only time I got any, when I got through to anybody, because John said, here, call Jessica Brant, I think her name is. Called Jessica Brant, guess who calls me up? Claire calls me up. Claire calls me up, me and Claire haven't had the best of dialogue with each other and I get it. But the thing is, is that I lost the sale because I could not get that paid off. We fell out of escrow. We were in escrow for $740,000. We came in, we sold it for $700,000. I didn't ask them for $40,000. I didn't ask them for anything. What I asked them for, I said, you know what? I agreed to pay this. I don't agree with this. Fine, I think it's absolutely crazy, but there's no accountability for you guys. When I'm saying, hey, look, I'm willing to pay this. Let me get, let's get it done. She gave me everything in the book and then when I went to LeAnn, LeAnn said, or Gale before LeAnn, well, you got this paperwork from Claire. You were emailed this paperwork. Where's the site plans? Where's this? Where's that? I'm like, we're past that. We're past that. I figured, I had a permit. They came out, the county came out and signed it out. PG&E came out, rehooked the gas line up. We filled it back in. The tree's beautiful. What's the problem? So I asked them. I said, it took you two months. I lost the sale. I said, it cost me $3,500 a month. My mortgage is $2,500 a month. That's the guy I pay my mortgage to every month. I said, hey, you need to take, cut it in half to $5,000 or make it $5,000. It's only fair. That's what I asked. I wasn't mean. Got nowhere. They just keep putting me through the, up, up the ladder. And then she told me, I can't do that. So finally, I went to my friend who knows all of you guys, said, hey, you need to get ahold of these people. This is what you need to do. So I tried to, I called her. I told her I was going to make the appeal. She told me I could make the appeal. She said, that's what my, Chris said, that was what my choices were. Well, then when I went back down, paid it, I said, I'm going to pay it under protest. He said, I can do that. I went downstairs, went to pay it to get my final thing paid off. I wasn't even at plant, her desk. I was at another girl's desk. And guess who comes along and stands over? Claire. So she comes over and stands over there. Meanwhile, I put a call into Howard, to your office, and Howard called me back at the time. Howard calls me back. She's saying, you can't make the appeal. LeAnn, there's no appeal. You can't appeal. LeAnn's going to tell you, you can't appeal. I'm like, okay, just get LeAnn. Oh, and you need to do this. I've already paid the money, but she said, you need to move these rocks. I need this before we give you a final. I'm like, can you give it to me in writing? No, you got it. No, I don't. I don't have it in writing. So I said, look, I need to get this done. So I said, I don't even want to talk to you. So basically, Howard listened to the conversation of her saying that, because he sat on hold. Then he, I got a call back from her later on that night and she said that she's going to let the appeal go through because it was against her better judgment. She doesn't agree with it, but Chris Bohuji talked her into doing it. That's what she told me on the phone. So my thing is this, I'm very passionate and I get it, but I don't step on no one to get ahead and alls I want is fair. I'm not saying that we weren't wrong. We took out one tree. One tree. That was a tree that was half-dead, which I got pictures too. But the thing is, is that I don't, alls I wanted to do was just get it over with and I couldn't. And then there's no accountability. She can, even, there was no reason for her to come to that desk the day that I stood there. That's just even more. I was so, I didn't want to come here today because I'm that mad because they're supposed to help us. I paid a lot for my permits. I paid for everything. I said, look, I'll pay for it. Why do I have to wait a month and a half or two months to receive that? And do I have to go to John Dorborough and Todd Newington and go every week down to Gady before this lady will give it to me? What was her reasoning? And then I asked LeAnn. I said, what is, what's a fair amount of time? Tell me what it is. They never answered my question. Chris was on the phone, she was on the phone. And I wouldn't let them off the phone because I was saying, give me what's fair. Tell me what's, what do you consider a good amount of time? And she could not answer that. So at any, at any point in time, they can do whatever they want. They can hold our sale up. They can hold whatever, whatever they want up. I'm not saying I'm 100% right, but I'm, I was, I accepted my responsibility. And that, that amount of time to receive that is crazy. That's just not fair. That's all I really have to say. I apologize for getting loud. I'm just very frustrated.
We hear much louder, so.
Well, yeah. Sorry.
Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Mr. Andrade, so just trying to, you're, you're excited, so I want to make sure I understand. You're not complaining about the legality of the fee? You're complaining about not getting clearance that you paid the fee?
Well, I am complaining about the legality of the fee because when I, when I read into it, and I asked her this too, and it says it in the email, which I'm sure you got a copy, I said, it says here in your county fees, anything over $500, I should be, I should be getting, I should get a hearing. I didn't get a hearing. I, that never even came clear to me. Now, I did tell her, in all fairness to them, on that point, I did say, hey, we need to finish this. Just get us, just get it to us. So David went to her because I, I had nothing nice to say to Claire. And Claire probably has nothing nice to say to me, but.
And that, that might be part of the problem.
Yeah, well, no, but the problem, the part of the problem is, is that, listen, at that point in time, we're saying, we're accepting, we're saying, let's, let's, we need to do this. We need to sell the property. We can't get the clearance until you.
Okay, I heard you say that before.
Yeah.
So you paid the fee under protest?
Correct.
And?
Well, I had to, to sell it, because I didn't want to keep paying that gentleman back there mortgage every month and taxes and everything else that comes with owning a property.
And that's, that's why there's a process to pay it under protest?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So, but today, it's not clear to me, you're, you are protesting that fee for what reasons? You did cut down a tree and you had unpermitted work in the drip line of the trees?
I did not have unpermitted work. It was, to my understanding, I had the, I had, when that, I had a permit for the property. It had, it had the whole plan for landscaping and everything on the plan. Now, she told me I needed to put the trees on there. She did tell me that. And when I dealt with the county, even John Dorborough, I wish he was here today too, because I asked him, I said, because we didn't plan on having to drip, to dig that drip line. We had a 401 or whatever where they come and mark the place where you can dig. Well, when we dug by the front door, the line was broke. There was already a gas riser there, so the line was broke. They came out there and tapped that off and said, cut it. So the house is right here. The gas line is right here.
Okay, well, we're not on the site and we can't go to the site, but we did have staff on the site.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so.
So it had, it had to be dug. PG&E was going to dig it and PG&E was going to cost, charge $8,000 to dig it. So we said we'd dig it ourselves.[1667.13] eight thousand dollars to dig it. So we said we'd dig it ourselves. I let John Dorborough know, and I said, do I need to add everything? He said, no, the riser was there. So that's all we did is, if you look at the, if you look at your picture on the drip line...
Yes?
I mean, it says, I don't see where all the, the roots are exposed, and it says the canopy of the tree, the longest part, has to be over. So there's, I mean, looking at the county rules on the trees, I, that's, that's still okay.
To me, it looks like you're within the drip line of the tree. We're looking at the same picture, to me. But I'm, I'm not on the property, and it's already covered up already, so.
Let me see, this rule I just pulled up.
So I think, I think I understand your complaint, and I'd like to give the planning director an opportunity to respond to those items, if you could take a seat.
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, you wanted me to respond to the trenching component, or?
Yes.
So first, he did have a building permit, but that is not the same as a permit to impact the oak trees, which he, again, was informed in writing back with the original notice to him back in 2017. This is the first I'm hearing about the PG&E component. I haven't heard that before today. But in any regard, if you're going to impact a protected oak tree, you need to come to the county first, and you need to get a permit to do that from the county.
And when you come in for a building permit, do you get something in writing about the oak trees, tree permit?
I actually...
You said it went out in writing, but the timing is kinda what I'm questioning you about.
Sure. The information that came from planning staff came as a result of neighborhood complaints into the planning department as a result of impacts and improper effects. So we had neighbors complaining to us that the oak trees were being impacted. I do not know exactly what information building would have provided him. The complaint didn't come from building. The complaint came from neighbors. But we did go out there promptly and informed him what he needed to do through the rest of the construction process. He did remove another tree even after we gave him that information. That's when the tree removal occurred, like, I think, close to a year after that. So. We did not feel he was following the information that we gave him.
Yeah. And are you familiar with the, the phone calls not being responded to situation?
Sure. I do believe there were phone calls back and forth. I do not have a documentation of how many calls there were. It's pretty clear from my review, because I did try to take a very independent review of what happened here. It was an extended period of time where there was no response from him, and it wasn't really until they tried to final the permit, where they realized that we did have this hold, and they were not going to be able to final the building permit hold, when they started really contacting us and trying to respond to clear it. And that's when staff went back out on site to work with them with regard to what are the fees, since they had never provided us the requested information for us to assess the fee. So then we did respond to them. We went out on site. That's in the staff report on October 30th, to begin to assess the actual impacts.
So, on October 30th, you were, your department was on site?
Yes.
And made a determination? And so, documentation-wise, is, would the determination have been made at that moment? Or do you, does a letter come, I'm trying to understand when the letter comes out versus verbal, and the phone calls and that sort of thing?
Sure. My understanding is that they continued to try to approach us to have a reduction in the fee amount. And so, much of the conversation, and I have spent some number of hours on the phone, and much of that is typically about how can they negotiate a lower fee amount? So my understanding is much of the back and forth, and on their part, is to protest the fees, to protest the fee amount, and to try to figure out how to lower it. So, as it was relayed to me, the conversation on October 30th at the site plan was, they were trying to seek any way that they could to reduce the fees. The only off, option we really had was for them to make a direct payment to the Tree Foundation, which would avoid a very minor three hundred and fifty dollar IT fee, which is a pretty small component. But that, nothing came back in. They didn't do anything. So then, our staff finally invoiced them three weeks later on November 20th. So it did take us three weeks from the site visit to invoice them. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, what, do we have a standard process or protocol in place for phone calls to be routed, especially phone calls of an urgent nature, so that if mail, you know, phone, voicemail boxes are full, it then goes to seek a voicemail box that is not full, so that, you know, human-to-human contact can be made?
Yeah. I would say our department is one of the places where you can still get a live person on a phone. So we have a receptionist. We have a secretary. There are other options. We have a counter, you know, our, obviously, the bulk of our staff are here downtown, at the downtown counter. So you can always come in line. We have backup staff. We do have one primary tree person, but if you come in...
If someone is calling a specific number, whether it be the planning director or anyone else, and it rolls over because the voicemail's full, or the person's not there, is there an automatic redirect to, to, to someplace where someone's gonna actually pick it up?
I don't know if we have rollover, but certainly we have all of our phone numbers on the website. We have a main reception number. We have email. We have everything available for people to reach us.
But there's no receptionist that, that someone could go back to, and, that's probably an old-fashioned word, but, you know, an operator that could roll back to, and could run and get somebody, or make sure you knew that they were there?
Well, we would probably take a message, rather than necessarily finding someone. And a lot of times when we are busy, we do encourage people to come in to the business assistance counter over here, because you can always just go get in line and, and...
I guess my concern stems from if, if someone's given a specific number to call, to use, they use the number as directed, they continue to be frustrated because their voicemail box is full or whatnot, and there's no automatic rollover to find the receptionist, or the, a person that is been charged to kind of always be available to speak to, to someone should they call. You're really relying on that, the initiative of someone to, to then determine at some point, using some amount of time, to either come in, or go to the website, or, you know, figure it out, right?
I will say, we try to be responsive. I mean, we do at times have heavy periods, but I do believe that staff return calls. So I don't, I don't have a record of exactly, you know, what the back and forth was.
And we don't have a standardized way of recording, or tracking phone calls, right?
No.
No.
We have a high volume of calls, a very high volume of calls into our business assistance center. And so, we do not keep and track every voicemail message. That would be...
So, next line of question has to do with what you said right at the outset of arriving at the podium, which is, this is the first time where you were unaware about the PG&E connection, the gas issue, gas line issue?
Yes.
So that seems to be a pretty big disconnect from what the appellant is stating, and what you claim your, your knowledge is of why the trench was dug in the first place.
Right. I mean, I have spent some number of hours on the phone with him. I have not heard that argument before. But in, irregardless of that, we do need to be informed, and a tree permit does need to be obtained if you are impacting an oak tree.
What happens in the case of a gas leak? I mean, if there's, I mean, if it's a gas line versus a water line, or a gas line versus a telephone line, gas is a different kind of utility, right?
Right.
It's got a very obvious public safety aspect to it.
Certainly.
So, it troubles me to, troubles me to hear that there's that much of a departure between that narrative and, and your narrative.
Well, I didn't hear him say that there was an emergency situation. I think if there was an emergency gas leak...
I understand that, but if someone is, if someone is dealing with a utility, a large utility like PG&E, and they're saying, we need to get at this gas line because it's broken. My first, this is just me speaking, but my first inclination is, oh, I need to go get a tree permit. So, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
So, I guess, and this is a question, I guess, for the appellant, when, when if he comes back to the podium, is, is there any documentation of the need for that gas line to be addressed with some immediacy, or, or not? Or is this just kinda hearsay?
This, today was the first I'd heard of a gas, of the gas line.
Okay, so maybe you, Mr. Andrade, could, you know, if you're gonna come back and answer some questions, add that to your list, because I'd like to know, how has that been documented? Because you, as far as I know, you've just told both the planning director and the board of supervisors for the first time that there was a gas line.
Supervisor Tolle.
But just before, along that same line, does, does PG&E know about tree permits?
Yes. We have actually worked extensively with PG&E on tree permitting issues. Yeah, in fact, they voluntarily came forward, needed to remove a fair number of trees throughout the county, paid, I wanna say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those tree removals, which we were able to turn over to the Tree Foundation for the Neighborhoods program, which was a great success on both our and PG&E's part. So, yes.
Okay, so if PG&E was putting a line into that property, they would know that they, and they were going to run over the roots, they would know they needed a tree permit?
I believe so, yes. We have worked extensively with PG&E in the past.
Sorry, Don, I just wanted to follow up on the same line.
That's fine. No, you've asked, both you and Supervisor Serna asked some questions that I had too. I guess, trying to piece this together a bit, so, if I understand, certainly from the testimony from Mr. Andrade, and then your response to my colleagues, LeAnn. So in June 2017, complaints came in. Somebody went out, I don't know if it was Claire, whoever went out, and issued a letter later that month, I guess, June 30th, the end of the month. And so these pictures that we see here clearly show a trench. If they're, if they're the ones that are referenced in the, in the memo, doesn't show it to the front door, although I don't know, you can't see beyond the, the, kind of the rise there next to the driveway where you see the car in the, in the background. But if, in fact, it was a, you know, an issue of safety, both for, certainly for the occupants of the house, but, you know, neighborhood, I guess, adjacent neighbors. So that does raise a question, and I guess Mr. Andrade will respond to that when he comes out, but I... So, what was the time lag, though? So, this was June 30th, and then the next chronicling we have is May of 2018, when there was a tree removed. What sort of activity? I mean, I, I heard Mr. Andrade go through, again, without any dates attached to it, but numerous phone calls, outreach, messages left, messages returned, messages not returned, back and forth, back and forth. Is that what was going on between June of 17, and I guess finally October of, of 18?
I think our normal, our normal practice is we put a hold on the building permit. We provide the owner with information. We don't really have the staff to go out and do like weekly site checks, or, you know, we figure eventually they'll clear it when they need to clear their building permit hold.
Okay, so...
And apparently, there were some calls back and forth, but I don't have a, I don't, we didn't keep those voicemails.
And again, it, you know, it, you know, it's, I don't wanna get too much back and forth here, but I'm trying to understand, again, obviously, we have, you know, the requests before us to weigh the fees. You give us your recommendation. I guess, kinda going into what Mr. Serna asked about, and Susan alluded to in her comments too, kinda this point of context. I recognize it. You guys got a heavy volume, and, you know, and, and such, but matters of urgency, and then we have multiple departments, and yet, ultimately, this rests with planning department on an enforcement action. And so, we see what we have before us today. And, you know, I've had similar issues, not related to trees, but where folks have actually shown receipts. They've been down, waited to visit with somebody at counter, you know, but people say, well, we didn't have any, there was no appointment, we don't have this, and they left a message. Well, we don't have anything on the messaging machine. They show me phone records that say, I called the county at such and such a time. And, you know, and that back and forth doesn't really get to, to solutions set here. But I guess if there was some urgency, because again, there was trenching that was identified in June, then subsequently, there was a tree removed, and, you know, ultimately, there's a fiscal impact. Now, you happened to sell the house, and obviously, you know, that got accomplished. But I am concerned about that, that, you know, on our, on the receiving end, recognize there's a responsibility, and certainly not let Mr. Andrade off the hook on this, that, you know, to continue to pursue that if you don't get a call back. But that we have a responsibility, particularly as a matter of urgency involved here, volume or not. I mean, our offices deal with that all the time. And it's, and I am concerned, because in the staff report and the analysis, what's said is that, I guess this is how we offer our justification, is that staff maintains that internal policies have been followed, and that Mr. Andrade was negligent in his response to comply with tree preservation ordinance. End of sentence. It seems to me that when you have this back and forth, that, you know, maybe that's findings, and obviously, you know, you're the one standing before us fielding the questions, but, and, you know, I certainly trust your judgment, and, you know, oftentimes, you do intervene when appropriate. But I, I guess I, I am concerned, and, you know, and obviously, staff's here and, and the audience here today, that in matters like this, particularly now, we're, we're two years past the initial complaint. Tree's gone, house has been sold, and now we get this appeal, and you're learning for the first time about the PG&E part of that. I don't know if there's some other internal processes that don't require such a dedication of your time, but, you know, that could help us get to some, you know, pinpointing that if there are matters like this, and particularly when it's got other county departments involved, because building department doesn't have any responsibility in this. They issued the building permit. You attached an email to that. And, you know, he goes in and, and, and does the permitted work, noting, obviously, as you call attention to this based upon the neighborhood complaints. I don't know, it just seems a bit compounded here, and again, it's not assigning blame or, you know, any lack of attention to the matter, but I am just a little concerned that, you know, I don't know how many of these we get any given year, how many tree violations, but I imagine they're fairly modest in number, as it relates to development on sites. Is that true? And then I see you...
No, there are a fair number of tree violations. We are out in the field. I think, I was working with Claire on two free tree violations this morning, as a matter of fact. With regard to the urgency, I will say, I mean, you can see, there was a long period of time between June of 2017 and October of 2018.
Right, that's why I was asking.
When it became very urgent on their part to finally, they realized that they weren't gonna be able to move forward, in my mind, and they started contacting us to try to figure out what they needed to do. Admittedly, it took us three weeks working with them, because they kept saying they wanted to try to lower the fee before we issued them the dollar amount. He finally, Mr. Andrade finally reached me in the middle of February.
2019.
2019. I had repeated conversations with him. They were entirely about, could he pay 50%? What could he do to negotiate with me a different fee amount? It wasn't so much the urgency to get it done and signed off, but an urgency to try to convince me that I needed to lower the fee.
But what, I'm talking about the permitted work, though, that if there was a gas line that needed to be connected, the house was still occupied. I mean, that was part of the work, right? There was also a driveway install.
We didn't prevent that. In our mind, the trench was done, the impacts had happened. So at that point, all there was for them to do with regard to the tree violation was just to pay the, the impact fee to the tree. We didn't prevent the gas line, or the building permit, or anything from moving forward.
No, okay, but that, you kind of missed my point. My, and this is what I was trying to get to, is that, no, you didn't prevent that, but it's after the fact, in that if there's some instruction about avoiding root lines, or drip, drip lines, or whatever, and obviously, they're trying to save money, not paying PG&E eighty-five hundred dollars to do the trenching. We issued a permit for, I guess, a repair to, to the gas line, to the main service line that comes into the, to the house. I, I trust that's what it was. They'd already begun the trench, because that's a necessity, a pretty urgent matter, particularly if there's a, to Mr. Serna's question about if there was a leak, or something like that, that... And so, that was kinda after the fact. You went out there, and the trenching had already been done, under a permit that had been issued. Now, if the tree ordinance is referenced, I mean, there's a lot of things that are referenced. I mean, the building codes, you know, hundreds of pages and so forth, and so, that it doesn't absolve them of responsibility to be, you know, knowledgeable about certain aspects, but... And then obviously, tree was removed after that. But I guess, to my, that was my point about the urgency, is that they needed to get that gas line. You just learned about that today.
We didn't stop them from doing that. We didn't stop them from working on the gas line at all.
No, you didn't stop him. But he already dug the trench to put the gas line in, so whatever damage had been done to the tree that we're, you know, asserting here, already been done, right?
Right, yes.
Based, under a, under a permit that had been issued to replace the gas line, didn't say go next to the tree, but it was a proper permit?
Yeah, presumably, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I didn't investigate the...
No, I know. Again, I appreciate your effort. I know you spent a lot of time on this. Thanks.
I have a suggestion. I'd like to refer this to Mike Penrose, who's handles the infrastructure, and worked with planning to kind of, what, what we're missing here is a timeline and the details, and which kind of permits come first, and when the gas company was there, and what they did. And I think it'd be easier to do in a smaller setting. So, he is retiring, so I'm, hopefully, we can get an appointment with him maybe this week. Mr. Andrade can come in and work out. Maybe you can bring, not maybe, but please bring the appropriate persons from your department who have all the, the dates and the facts in line, because I think that's what really this is a lot about.
Okay, definitely.
So...
I'm just gonna ask county council if there's a timing issue. Is there a problem? Is there some clock ticking that...
Can you pull up the, I don't think so. I think it's just, appeal had to be submitted in writing to the clerk or the board within fifteen days. Has to be on the clerk's agenda within thirty days, which it was. So it can be continued again.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will note, we did allow him to appeal. Technically, I think it says fifteen days from his original notice, which would have been, would have been in 2017. But it did not include information about that fifteen-day appeal period, so that was one of the things that I did choose to reissue that notice so that he could appeal it, since he hadn't been informed of his appeal rights.
So for your meeting with Mike Penrose, I'd go back to 2017, and I think the report that comes back to us ought to just lay all of these dates out, and who said what to whom, and it'll, it'll make more sense to all of us. So I would ask that we continue this to June...
Fourth.
Fourth.
Okay.
That's not a budget day, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Can I, can I respond to your thing to you guys?
Not if you're gonna go into details and, about arguing with the director.
At this point, it might not be in your best interest.
Okay.
You don't wanna... You don't want to push it over to June 4th?
Well, no, not really, I don't, and this is-
Okay, well, if you insist on an answer today, it's going to be no, so that's my offer.
But you know what, and that's fine too, Susan, but you know what, the biggest thing for me is that-
You gotta come up.
Please hear me.
No, you need to run the record.
Come up to-
In all fairness to me, it is very stressful, I mean, I have, my investors lost money, I lost a lot of money on this property, and I don't want to sit there and, I don't want to argue with her, argue with anybody about this, because again, it's stressful, but I will tell you this, PG&E came out to the property because of a gas leak, and they started digging from the front, they cut from the street, and what's going to cut the line-
Okay.
Hold on, hear me out.
We can't argue about that any longer.
Okay, okay, but-
I'm just offering you an opportunity-
Okay, so my last thing, my last- Sir, sir, please do not argue with the board.
I'm sorry.
We can do this in a way that's respectful, okay?
I'm sorry.
I'm offering a meeting with the person who is over this department, he's a very logical guy, and I think he'll be able to work out the timeline and the situation with PG&E, and we'll have a lot more information, so we would be doing this on June 4th, if you're available.
This is as close to a lifeline as you're going to get today.
I understand, but it's not always about that, it's about for the next person, that, you know, I mean, because it's very, very stressful, and then again-
We recognize that.
I thought, when the permit, she said, I didn't get in touch with her on the permit, because I was, the permit people were coming out and signing it off, so I thought that was my permit.
So we have a motion to continue to June 4th, and I believe I heard a second, second, Serna?
Can we have a time, or?
Yeah.
He's in business, he needs to know when to be here.
Thank you, guys.
We can do it at 2:00, are you okay?
2:00?
So, June 4th at 2:00 PM.
Okay.
Would you rather have it at the end of the day, so it's towards the end of your workday? Okay, and then sometime in between, you'll get a call to come to a meeting with the planning department and other officials from the county to kind of work out this timeline.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, please vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you'll hold off just one second, Mr. Petrovich, you've turned in a card to speak on an item that was heard this morning, are you aware of that?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's called a mistake that a rookie would normally make.
You certainly are not that, sir.
Not a rookie.
And I apologize, what I had done is when this matter was continued from before, I simply changed the date, and it was scheduled for 2:45 previously, and that's how I ended up here, instead of at 9:30, and I throw myself at the mercy of the court, I understand there was no public comment for this matter, and it has to do with the Floren Vineyard fees, and I also understand there's a second reading of this matter, and so maybe it doesn't become official until then, on May 21st.
There were two ordinances, I wasn't here, well, actually, I was in the audience this morning, but there were two ordinances, is my memory, that was, that were included in the package and some resolutions, the resolutions would be in effect now, but I'm not familiar enough with the item to remember which is which, but the ordinances were continued to the next meeting.
Yeah, the fee ordinances were, yeah, fee ordinances, so the fees don't come effective, resolution approving the plan and the environmental documentation, those were taken.
That's in effect.
Right, so it's still a part of it, that's still pending.
Yeah, I guess what my recommendation would be, Mr. Petrovich, is to get in touch with county council and figure out what recourse you may have, if any, at this point. Regarding the next meeting.
Regarding the next meeting.
Yes, yes.
So it was continued, was it continued to the 21st? I can't remember the date.
I believe it was May 21st. 21st?
Before the adoption of the ordinances, yes.
Yes.
I didn't quite understand the two ordinance part, but am I hearing correctly that if I speak to county council, there may be a chance to reopen public comment?
So, may I?
Yes.
So there were a number of items that were included in what the board did this morning, and some of them were final actions this morning, but there were the two fee ordinances that were considered this morning, and those required two readings, and the second reading is on May 21st, so there isn't, that's not final yet, so there is an opportunity still to weigh in on those ordinances, if there's an interest in the board to reopen the rest of it, we would have to, the board would have to decide that you wanted to do that. But if it's just the ordinances, you do have a chance.
So, my particular interest is in the amount of fees and the impact on the entire plan, obviously, my property included, I don't know where that fits into what was adopted and what was not adopted.
That's a good conversation this morning.
Yeah, I don't, I can't.
Sure.
I don't know enough without having to look at it.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, I was going to say that, because I know you had spoken with me about that, and I knew that North Vineyard Station got put over, but I, you know, you own property throughout the county, but I thought, because you spoke to me with this, the information you'd talked to me about, the particular property was in the Floren Vineyard Gap piece, if I'm not mistaken, but I was just going to say that we didn't have any public, we had a good, robust discussion with the board and with staff, certainly while we're still in session, though, Krista, we can revisit an action we took this morning, that was my question of you, is that if we took an action, we could revisit that before we go out of session today and still have it current, so we could bring it back to the board, and then schedule that for next Tuesday, full consideration again, which would just, would delay it for a week, or two weeks, until we next came in for as far as the ordinances, I mean, regarding the ordinances.
Have until the, yeah, until the close of business today, to do that, if you choose to do that.
And actually, the property is actually in your district, at least the specific piece, yeah, right, right. So, again, I don't know what you intend to put on the record today, and obviously, we've got other items on the agenda, you know, in light of, you know, what it means to everybody, including you, Mr. Petrovich, but a whole lot of other folks, including districts that are waiting for reimbursement, and other developers who've built infrastructure are waiting for reimbursement, but again, if we postpone this till next Tuesday, it would be a little bit out of the ordinary, but we certainly could call it back, I guess, by reconsideration of the motion, and you know, give you that opportunity to weigh in, and you know, I'm sure the staff's going to be a little bit chewed up at us about it, but we could do that.
So here's how big a pain I am. There's only one conference, it's a national conference for the shopping center industry,
Vegas.
And it's on the 21st in Las Vegas, which I hate going to, but I have 14 meetings booked that day in Las Vegas, to try to bring more revenue and jobs and sales tax, so, it's, I'm sorry.
So you're not available that day?
No.
Let me offer this, I guess we could, you know, we've got two other hearing items today, again, this is certainly up to the board and our schedules and so forth, but we could bring it back, there wasn't any other public that was here that at least spoke today, we could, you know, reopen it today for, you know, take your testimony, might not change any of the outcome that we already gave direction on, but I, and that's out of the ordinary, I get them to-
It's unusual, but I'm willing, it is a significant project that he's talking about in District 2.
Can you get transportation staff back here in time?
Infrastructure.
Let's do that, then, we'll take it.
7:30 PM tonight, Paul.
I'm at your mercy, so, 10:00 PM, midnight.
So, let's hear the 2:45 and the 3:00, and then see if we can get staff here to-
Yeah, because the Beach Don Lake, we're going to have some conversation, it's probably, I mentioned, 45 minutes or so, so maybe 4:00 or something, anyway.
I don't know that it'll take 45 minutes, we've talked pretty exclusively.
Yeah, we have some public testimony, we have some folks talking about flood insurance, a few other things, Dan.
Yeah, right.
So I would suggest that we have a motion to reconsider, that's voted on now-
Right now.
And a time that-
Okay, so moved.
Okay, we have to make the motion, has to be one of those either made the first or the second on the-
I'm sorry.
On the reconsideration, it has to be somebody who either made their original motion and/or seconded it, and I, I think I made the motion, you-
It was the two of us, I can't remember.
Okay, all right, he's made it, I second it, okay, for reconsideration.
All right, so the chair's making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, to reconsider, and it'll be heard this afternoon at-
After we get done with the 3:00 item.
All right.
So around 4:00, right?
Vote on that.
If that, it's 3:40.
We have to vote first.
Yeah.
But if I were you, I wouldn't go very far.
You don't have to go to Vegas three now and then, do you?
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And what item number that was out, Flo, that was 38, 39?
39.
39?
39.
Okay, in case anybody's watching that wants to come down and-
Yeah, it's item 39.
Thank you so much.
We're in it for 4:00.
So now, we'll go to item 46, which is the La Marina Food Mart PCN, it's an ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a type 20 beer and wine liquor license to La Marina Food Mart at 4128 El Camino Avenue, Suite A, in the Arden Arcade Community.
Good afternoon, members of the board, I do have a PowerPoint on this item. All right, this is the La Marina Food Mart Public Convenience and Necessity Hearing. The site is 4128 El Camino Avenue, Suite A, in the Arden Arcade Community, and this is a hearing to determine whether public inconvenience and necessity would be served by a type 20, which is beer and wine license. This is the standard census tract and one-mile radius map that we put in your PCN reports. You can see the site in the center there, and it is approximately a half mile to the nearest other location to buy beer or wine, although there certainly are multiple other locations within the one-mile radius. La Marina Food Mart is an existing convenience store, they're requesting beer and wine. The site is not in high crime, but it is in an over-concentrated census tract, the standard allows for one off-site liquor license within the census tract, and this approval would result in a total of five. Within a one-mile radius, there are 17 establishments, six beer and wine, and 11 beer, wine, and spirits. The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council considered this, and ended up recommending approval on a six-to-one recommendation vote. The sheriff's office is willing to withdraw their opposition, and the applicant has concurred with a number of standard conditions that include no single sales, the limitation on the hours between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and that alcohol must be kept in a securable storage area. And so, staff is recommending approval of this one today, I know, we always try to point out why this one may be distinguished from other requests, partly, it's not in a high-crime area, it is a half-mile to other establishments, we do have the CPAC advisory recommendation in support, we had mixed community reaction, the CPAC notes indicate that there were four residents opposed and three in support at the CPAC meeting, but there was some support, there's been one additional correspondent that's come in, and we do have the sheriff conditions, so that is the reasons for staff recommendation today. We do have the applicant here, Mr. Martinez, and he has gathered, he has a list of petitions of people supporting his application that he just showed us immediately prior to the hearing, that he wants to submit to the board, so I just wanted to alert you of that, those materials that he has. Are there any questions?
Right now, is the applicant going to speak?
Is the applicant prepared to speak? Okay.
Hello, good afternoon.
First, could we get your name straight, one, your letter says Miguel Rosendez, and the report says Miguel Martinez.
Miguel Martinez Rosendez.
Is the correct name?
That's the correct name.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not very good on public speaking, so I apologize for that. I, like I said, I'm Miguel Martinez Rosendez, I reside at 3866 St. Blart Drive here in Sacramento. Last year, I bought a convenience grocery store, which was more like a smoke shop. My intentions are to change all that, and in fact, I already got rid of all the paraphernalia, but, and then we are adding a dairy-
Your voice got real low there, are you, you're by, you want to open a smoke shop, or you're closing the smoke shop?
No, the smoke shop is gone.
Gone, okay.
We got rid of all the paraphernalia in there, so, and now, instead of that, we're, we think the community needs more of a groceries, dairy, bread, fruits, vegetables, and those are the items that we're going to add, or we added already, we already have some, but also, we need other departments to help us pay the rent as well, which is beer and wine, and that's why we're here to see if all the members of the board can approve that.
Okay.
My, I have a lot of experience in retail, I worked for Smart &amp; Final for 20 years, I managed some of the Smart &amp; Final grocery stores, and that's one of the departments, it was my front that I always focused on, checking IDs, making sure that nobody would buy, not only, not only for checks, or, but make sure that no one would buy cigarettes or alcohol underage.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, have you, you've read the requirements of the sheriff's letter?
Yes, I have them.
And you're able to, you can go along with the sheriff's requirements?
Definitely.
Okay. The only thing I would like to see, not really added, but I'd recommend, is that you, that you police the parking lot of trash, you've got a, you know, a pretty good storefront there, make sure, people come into convenience stores and maybe eat and toss their wrappers.
They always do.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and are there any other questions for him? No, done, okay, then I would recommend moving ahead with the finding of public convenience and necessity.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? I have no cards from the public, is that correct? Okay, please vote.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Unanimous vote.
Next item.
Item 47 is the report back on flood mitigation for the Point Pleasant area.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, staff was asked to report back on a number of measures for flood mitigation in the Beach Don Lake area, some based on just an update of existing activities, and some suggested additional ideas for flood mitigation. I'm going to briefly touch on those that are in the staff report, I really think that the conversation's going to be driven by questions from the board, particularly Supervisor Natale, and as well, we've got-
I gave you a briefing, Michael, so you know.
Yes, thank you, we do have some residents from the Point Pleasant area, we do also have staff from Water Resources, I think county OES as well, to speak to some details on some of the aspects of flood mitigation activities in the area. In December, we had met with your board, and that's where we were directed to come back, and so what I'd like to do is just give you an update on some of the activities that have been ongoing. The McCormick-Williams Tract was a project that was initiated after the 2017 storm, and the levees on that island failed, the nature conservancy at the time agreed to repair the levees at a lower elevation to maintain some level of flood benefit for the Point Pleasant community to the north, part of that with, the county agreed to contribute up to $400,000 for future dewatering costs, should there be a similar failure in the interim years. This was, this was basically a commitment as an incentive to help TNC keep the levees lowered and not bring them back up to the original height before they were damaged in the 2017 storms. Since that time, the nature conservancy is no longer leading the conservation project for the McCormick-Williams Tract, the state's taken that over, the agreement that we had to, you know, ideally provide those funds in the future, is no longer applicable, however, we have had conversations even last week with state DWR, indicating that we are committed to working with them, we would like to have them find a balanced solution that would continue to provide a benefit for the Beach Don Lake Point Pleasant area in terms of what they're going to do ultimately with the levees on McCormick-Williams Tract, the $400,000 is not spent, it's still in the fund that we maintain, but the key is that as the ownership of that conservation project has changed, we are in communication, we've got commitment from the state to include us in discussions, to ensure that local needs and local stakeholders' needs are brought into their, into their project planning activities. I think in the next few weeks, we will be having a meeting face-to-face with state staff as well to continue to- staff as well to continue the discussions. The idea, again, is to make sure that we can reap a benefit from whatever the state proposes with McCormick-Williams Tract. Flood warning and evacuation, there was some suggestion of developing a system for the Beach Stone Lake Point Pleasant area. The county did establish a communication system, flood warning system, 10 years ago. For the Beach Stone Lake area includes notifications by email. It's a website. There's a system called Everbridge, which actually puts phone calls out to a geographic area that's designated in advance of storm events, in advance of emergency events. So this is, this is part of the standard protocol that Office of Emergency Services uses for emergency planning, preparedness in advance of primarily storm events, because that's what we typically see in Sacramento County in terms of emergencies. Response and evacuation is also prioritized across the county by the Office of Emergency Services, depending on what the event is, in the context of the event, in the context of what's actually going on at that time. Water Resources participates in the EOC. We provide information and advice to Office of Emergency Services in advance of events that we anticipate, so that they can identify resource needs, actions that the county would need to take in terms of preparing residents to respond to floods, giving them a direction on how to prepare evacuation routes, availability of sandbags and other resources. So it's not, it's not that we haven't done it. This has actually been in place for a number of years. We identified some triggers as far as water surface elevations in various locations of the watershed that would help guide the process of communication to the community in advance of higher floodwaters. Home elevation is another ongoing activity that we've been undertaking, and I think we've come to you several times indicating that we were waiting, waiting and waiting for our home elevation grants to finally be approved. We had two grants that were finally approved last month. So now we've actually got, and George Booth can provide some details, we've got a number of candidates who are on the list who are actively ready to elevate. We've got contractors that we've communicated with who are interested and prepared to do the work. Staff has done the footwork in terms of the permitting process to make sure that we can make it as smooth as possible for elevation candidates as they're progressing a permit through the, through the system. This approach is what we've taken since 1995, as we've successfully administered 100 home elevation projects across the county using grant funds. So we're going to continue that approach, doing everything we can to run interference, streamline the process. And this is, this is, this is not greasing the skids and the fans. This is staff walking through the process with homeowners to make sure that, one, they understand what they need to do, and, two, to make sure that there aren't any impediments in the county process for them to get permits going and to get elevations happening. Home elevation is, you know, is a recommended approach to mitigating potential flood risk in the Beach Stone Lake area, as well as in any other flood plain in the county, because it's, provides the most certainty. It gets the house up above the flood plain. And we've got, I think, 123 Beach Stone Lake properties. 25 are currently on the list. We've got 89 across the county that are interested in home elevation. And with the two current elevation grants, most of the candidates are not in the Beach Stone Lake area. We've got candidates across the county who are going to be elevating their homes to protect them from flooding. And again, George Booth can provide some detail on the program, the numbers, locations, et cetera. There's been a discussion of flow adjustments as a means to mitigate flooding, and a flow adjustment ostensibly would mean paying for permission or paying for the right to flow water across a property. And that's, a case, a case where that has been done is look at the yellow bypass. There's, you have agriculture activities there, but you have a point where the state will need to direct water through that facility to peel off some flood volume. There's agreements in place that anticipate that and allow that. That's a situation where flow adjustments, in, you know, in staff's determination, and as I say, we look at it, that's where it makes sense. Here, we would really like to use the funds in the Beach Stone Lakes accounts to actually provide some protection via supporting elevations and berms and other projects, as we've discussed in the past. Flow adjustments don't appear upon the review to really make sense in terms of addressing protection from the flood events. It may be a means to provide some financial mechanism, but we do that through the Beach Stone Lake insurance subsidies as well, so I'm not sure that the flow adjustment itself provides any additional benefit or is really in the context of what we're trying to do with, with the Beach Stone Lakes funding in terms of flood protection and mitigation. And then I think that there's, there's probably an area of discussion. There are two funds that we currently have. Fund 314A, which was a developer contribution towards flood mitigation, and then we have an impact fee, the Beach Stone Lake Impact Fee, 315X. We continue to use those in support of our home elevation program to give some relief from the local cost share for Beach Stone Lakes residents, for their share of the elevation project. There's two additional funds, 105A and 105C, which we've discussed in the past. Those are Laguna Creek Ranch and Elliott Ranch South Funds. They're not cited in the staff report, only in that there's, there's some lack of clarity on exactly what that money could be used for. We'd like it to be able to use, be used for, you know, flood projects such as, you know, levy fixes. That's what the original intent was. We'd like to be able to, to use it to support home elevation or any other alternative projects. But there's been a difficulty in clearly identifying, looking through the documentation with those two development projects, exactly what that money's to be used for, aside from work on Lambert Road. We'd like to get clarity on that, and as Supervisor Anatoli and I have discussed, we need to get clarity on that so we can, one, be assured that we have latitude to use it for other areas, and, two, that it's not beholden to the city to say yea or nay on how we use it. There's some consultation with the city, because the city does have the ultimate responsibility for how it's used, because the mitigation funds were derived from development that's now in the city. But the intent for staff is to get clarity and get determination that we have the ability to use that for any number of measures that the board would deem appropriate in terms of mitigating the flooding in the Beach Stone Lake area. And I know that's, that's been raised in the past, the board, and I think we're in agreement that we, we need to get clarity. We don't have, we don't have the specific information that, that makes it clear determination. So we're working with county council, and I think planning, our intent is to do that. Again, I think that, I think the discussion will be driven a lot by the questions that come from Supervisors Anatoli. I know we'll have some folks speaking here at the podium, and if there's any, any details on home elevation or the other aspects of flood mitigation in the Beach Stone Lakes area, we'd be more than happy to give that information.
Okay, Supervisor Anatoli.
Yep. Well, thank you, Michael. And I did spend a good deal of time, and Michael did with me as well, last week, and went through, after I'd had a chance to, again, revisit this with, you know, some of the area residents and some who are in the audience today, obviously, but with others as well. I wanted to just maybe capture that, the point that Michael was hitting on last, and then I'll back up to some specific questions regarding our efforts down there. This issue regarding the funds that were set aside, there was a communication to our board early in February, and it was in response to inquiry that had been made last December, but all members of the board got a copy of it. And it relates to funding that was set aside, now on Funds 105A and C. In the one fund, there's some two-plus million dollars, and I'm not sure of the amount in the other.
A little over a million. It's a little over a million. About 1.1 million.
1.1 million and 2 million, so it was about 3.3.
Yeah.
So about $3 million that was set aside under conditions of approval, going back to the late '80s, early '90s. And the, I guess, determination, or at least the opinion's been offered now, that the approach that this board, albeit with lots of discussion and certainly maybe some differences amongst board members about approaches, has been to focus in on either utilizing home elevations and/or, you know, berms or flood walls are still an acceptable measure that was approved by this board in June of 17. But my concern is that now this, this money, by virtue of what's been offered or proffered is being escrowed, and it's being said that home elevation is not included, or potentially not included as a part of that. We have no physical project. This board is not pursued for a variety of reasons. The raise of Lambert Road, the Sump 90 improvements, which would involve the City of Sacramento a number of years ago. We looked at an 11F, which would have put a ring levy around a good portion of the Point Pleasant and some of the Franklin Pond area. So all those have been pursued, looked at, and for a variety of reasons, engineering, downstream opposition, concerns by this board about liability, whatever it might be, have been ruled out. So here we are now with a much narrower focus on what we can offer to residents and landowners in the Point Pleasant area specifically, and money that had been set aside specifically because of upstream impacts of development that raised the water surface elevation in certain flood events, particularly in the Morrison Creek Basin, were attributed. They were done through the SECA process. And actually, I was reading through the conditions on one of the projects back in 1992, and to the discussion that Michael offered relative to flow adjustments. We talked about compensation, the board at the time did, of property owners of affected structures for damages resulting from increased flood elevations, floodproofing structures, floodproofing of individual structures clustered together. And those were all part of the zoning agreements, and I guess we've had some difficulties since a lot of those records were transferred to the City of El Grove in trying to locate the MMRPs, the mitigation monitoring report profiles, but, reports. But nonetheless, this board spent hours and hours, even prior to my election to this board, in talking about downstream impacts and then doing, you know, I think, some pretty thorough examination what those impacts might be, and then providing some mitigation in that development, albeit it wasn't in its entirety, but provided in the form of funding that was made in good faith to the county. And now we're being told that we cannot potentially use it for where the county has brought the focus to. And so, again, Krista, you may have been the one that's been looking at this, but I think it needs, to Michael's point, and that's why I wanted to hit on this one, is we need to, that needs to be figured out. It's one thing about, you know, having to touch base with the City of El Grove, but these folks, all of these properties on the unincorporated area of the county, they're not going to be in any city probably ever. And I think that to say now that we've got money that's basically escrowed, and where this board has come to focus on is on home elevation and flood, flood walls or berms, that we can't use it for those purposes, then that puts us at a real stalemate. So I guess I raised the issue in this arena, because that may be, you know, the legal interpretation of this, but going back to the policy configuration behind this, and there was some financing that was done, I think it needs to get sorted out, because that's $3 million that can be available to assist landowners and residents of areas that have been affected and will continue to be affected, you know, pretty much forever, no matter what our efforts are with, with upstream development, because of the volume of water that, under certain, certain flood situations, will impact Point Pleasant from the north. And so I guess I posed that question. We may not have an answer today, and I don't know if you want to get into it, but that is certainly high on the list for report back, because basically, a little less than half of the money that we have available, and for the things we're trying to do and assist homeowners with, is now, has a question mark around it. And so, again, I appreciate our staff. I know Mike, Ben Rose, and Michael Peterson both, and I trust Krista or others have taken some look at this, but I'm concerned that we leave this question mark. It needs to be, get some definition around it, and maybe by July 1st, Michael, Mike, you could have it figured out.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm talking to Mike here.
You, any Mike?
No.
Yeah, I've already teed up that conversation with LeAnn Moffett, because I agree it's necessary to get absolute clarity. There was no definitive determination that we couldn't use it.
Right.
There was a lack of clarity that it would be available for elevation or other things that would be considered alternative projects.
Okay.
So I think that that's the nature of what we need to clarify. There's certainly no conceding that the funds are at the discretion of the city. We do recognize that there has to be at least some consultation before they're used, just to ensure that we don't proceed down a path that we may be compromised later.
Okay.
But, but working with council and planning and others, I actually agree so. So over the next few months, that's a path that we need to specifically take to get to resolution on that.
All right. That's very important. So then I'll just work back on that, and I know we have some folks for public testimony with chair, so I won't go real long here, but the, I think, along with that, as we look back to the financing, to the conditions of approval for the developments, the environmental documents, the mitigation monitoring reports, and wherever those responsibilities may, may lie, I think it's going to be important, and I guess I would ask this as a part of the future report back, because again, a lot of time has passed, and we're now, you know, 30 years in, in some cases, on some of these discussions, if not longer, obviously going back to origins, origins of some of the flood impacts back in the '60s and '70s. But I think a chronology would be very, very useful for everybody involved, and memorializes these conditions of approval, and maybe their evolution over time, and we have a lot of that. If it's not in our planning files, it's got to be in the board files. These projects were of the scale and scope that they came before the board supervisors. And I think as it relates to proposed mitigations and the evolution of those discussions, again, with the efforts by this board and by the county and Department of Water Resources to look at ways to address flooding in this area of the county, I think that would be a very important piece of information that would be useful here and now, but also going forward in the future. So I would, would ask that respectfully of our staff. It would require a bit of work, but I do think it would be helpful to all the parties involved. So let me just talk about, a little bit about the practicality, since we last visited this in December. And Michael, I appreciate the effort, and certainly George Booth and others on your staff, Cheyenne and others have, you know, put forth, and certainly responding to questions, but I also am working with individual property owners relative to their properties and providing some flood protection, should they choose to enter the elevation program and/or look at flood, flood walls or berms. But I guess part of the, and you spoke to it, and we talked a lot about this the other day, I think part of the challenge still is that the, I think, the process is not really user-friendly. This isn't a criticism of the county staff, but with the FEMA grants, and we waited a long time, and you talked about that, and we've gotten the nod that we can include, you know, some of the properties in this area should they choose to in this current round. But what is still, I think, puts on the property owners is that they've got to be out of their homes for seven or eight months, which are largely rural properties. Some have animals and other agricultural aspects to them. There is no provision for what people do in the interim. It also requires that they expend a good deal of money on either architecture and/or getting, you know, some design elements put together that would allow them to process a permit. That's on their dollar. Some of that would be reimbursable under our program. And it requires them to get three bids under the FEMA rules. And I think in the current environment, it's great that there's some folks that said they might be interested in helping people do this, but getting all that information together, doing it in the season, that makes sense, is no small undertaking. And again, it may be the same elsewhere in the county, but in some of the suburban settings, it may be a little easier because of the access to the property and/or some of the workarounds relative to utilities and such. And one of the things that's been brought to my attention has been the whole harmless, that that kind of comes at the end of the, of the arrangement, that should they enter into the FEMA program and actually elevate with the FEMA grant, obviously some, some money put in by the homeowner, and then us putting in at least a half of the, of the match in the stormwater utility in, in the Beach Stone Lakes area. That whole harmless is a pretty standard document, but one, I think, that raises some questions, and we may hear from some folks today about that. Would we still cover flood insurance for Beach Stone Lakes? Because again, a lot of these properties still have outlying accessory structures, and their wells and septics are all on their own dime. And we do have, obviously, funding set aside for that, but I think some policy direction, as you and I talked about, as relates to not just the whole harmless, but what insurance would be provided for in the event that somebody entered the home elevation program in the, in the Beach Stone Lakes area. So that's, I guess, a question, but maybe you can offer some, you know, insight, or George can, as to, you know, some of the... practical things that are being counted out there in the field, because as we focused on the home elevation. I did want to offer two other comments along those lines, and that is, is that initially, when we went into this a couple of years ago in the summer of two thousand seventeen, we didn't know we'd qualify for the FEMA grant. We wanted to encourage the home elevation, and so we were going to offer seventy-five thousand dollars from the Beachstone Lakes Fund, and then it would be on the homeowner or property owner to make up the other full quarter, twenty-five thousand dollars. Now that we have FEMA eligibility, and we're offering twelve thousand five hundred dollars of the twenty-five thousand dollar match, and I guess I'd like us for discussion purposes and to talk about this, we have set aside funding. It's not stormwater utility. It's money for mitigation. And I think either maybe individual escrow accounts as folks enter the program to assist them with some of those upfront costs that I mentioned, but also look at whether or not we could cover the full match in this case. Again, I recognize that's not, that's not the way we're approaching the stormwater utility. But again, we have dollars set aside specifically for this geographical area of the county, and that will require policy direction from this board. And again, we're not prepared, I guess, to do that today, but I'd like to have that come back to us, because I think that would be a factor in certainly encouraging folks to consider this strongly. And I guess the other issue I wanted to raise for today's purposes is that in addition to Point Pleasant, we have other areas that are outside the stormwater utility, and there are probably a few in the north area, but either in the Delta or in the Franklin Pond area where they have no ability to garner any match, either because they're not in the Beachstone Lakes basin, or they're not in the stormwater utility where we offer at least half of the match. And I guess I'd like to, for some future discussion, maybe with the report back, to have a conversation. And again, how we fund that, I'm not certain, but if we're encouraging home elevation, we have areas in the Wilton area, in the Delta, and in the Franklin Pond area, just across Franklin Boulevard, that...
And Arden Arcade.
Yeah, Arden Arcade. And so wherever those are at. But in the stormwater utility, though, in Arden Arcade, they actually do get half the match, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Yeah.
These areas are not eligible for any match at all. That's why I wanted to raise the issue, is that there's no matching incentive in those areas. And so there are, and maybe out in the north there, I don't know if in some of the areas, Alberta, Rio Linda, where they're not in the stormwater utility. But so, again, recognizing that we are offering a match in either Beachstone Lakes and/or in a large geographic portion of the county, including Arden Arcade, but we don't offer it in certain areas of the county. So I'd like us to take a look at that. I think that's enough on my end, but you're going to hear some other comments. I did want to point out, and I did to you in the staff report, I don't know if the correction was made, there was a pretty important word left out on page three.
Yeah, the correction did not get made, but I think the intent of the overall section was clear. But the staff report itself, the correction didn't get made in time, but...
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, because it says it does establish, or does not.
There's a missing "not."
You may want to point that, yeah. In fact, I'll just read it into the record. On page four, second paragraph, "The presence of a floodplain on a property," it says, "does establish the need for a flow easement on that property?" And clearly, the intent does not establish the need, even though folks might want us to seek a flow easement, but okay.
So yeah, let me just speak to some of those, understanding that you'd like to see us revisit those and report back, which is fully anticipated anyhow. Those are the price. But in terms of, you know, non-Beachstone Lake areas not having access either to Beachstone Lakes matching funds for their local share or stormwater utility, I think what it gets down to is identifying another funding source. If the county, if the board wants to establish that, you know, contribution to the local match for elevation candidates that are not in an area that's got other alternative funding, it's going to come down to what is the appropriate funding source. Utility's not appropriate. Beachstone Lakes not appropriate outside of the area it was established for. So that's really what it comes down to, is, you know, what's the potential obligation, and where does that money come from? So I don't think the concept is difficult. It's going to be identification of the funding, and that's something that I think is beyond Water Resources Department. But anyhow, I think that's, I just wanted to speak to that. And flood insurance, sort of the policy discussion, when do you sunset? Does it make sense to elevate using funds to get somebody above the floodplain where their insurance is pretty much to the minimum and continue to pay it? The idea was that the insurance subsidies would be provided until some sort of project was put in place. Now, we look at that on an individual basis, that project could well be considered the elevation itself. And then after that point, do you ask, you know, well, from this point, the subsidy or the insurance premiums are much lower because the house is elevated, but now that falls on the homeowner to bear in the future, knowing that their risk of flooding is far diminished because of the elevation, and that's a significant benefit. So that's where that policy discussion goes. We've, as we've stated before, we have a limited amount of funding, and it will be difficult to use it to fund elevation, fund berms and other activities, and continue to pay what is a drastically increasing insurance premium through the NFIP. And we've discussed that it's, you know, increasing, you know, doubling and tripling over time to where it's going to be quite unbearable. So the funding is not in any way have the capacity to be sustaining in perpetuity in terms of paying insurance. And we would not want to establish something that would compromise our ability to utilize it for flood mitigation projects now. But again, we've hinted to...
You can give us some analysis around that, though. Kind of what the projections are.
Yes, because we've got, you know, ten different ways we can go with this pot of money, and we've got to narrow it down so that we can make the appropriate analysis in this context. Let's approach it this way. We're going to do these three things, and at a certain point, we'll sunset it flood insurance. And I think we have that discussion so that we get clarity, because otherwise it is quite nebulous, and there's a lot of, you know, potentials and possibilities. But we've got to be able to limit that scope so that we can actually identify how far we can extend the use of the funding. But again, we've touched on it before, that there's a need to, you know, have that policy discussion.
Okay.
And then again, I'll just reiterate that our intent and desire is to get full clarity on the usability of the 105A and C funds, and that would be something that we would come back to your board with, with a determination and track that information down. I think that might have been...
And then a chronology...
And the chronology, of course.
With the mitigation...
Which will be beneficial for, you know, we've got, I think we've done that in the past, but I think that it's appropriate to, you know, take a fresh look at that, so that it sets that stage for how I see us moving into the next phase where we actually start getting homes elevated. I think we're going to be in a different scenario than we have been. And I honestly expect us, once we start having homes go up, that we're going to see an increase in interest in that area in elevating homes, because I think it does provide that assurance. And I think that changes, I think that changes the mindset of residents, and I think it changes our perspective on how we can best utilize the funding. But again, we'll include that information in our next report back. So I don't know if there's any other questions specifically about elevation candidate. George is here. He knows the ins and outs of the grants. I know we do have some folks from the community who would like to speak.
You may want to hear from folks first.
Yeah, I do have one card. Walt Hoppe.
In this handout, there's basically six questions that I would like addressed in writing. That doesn't have to be done now. You've covered some of that, some of those to some degree, but for clarification for both the board members and the residents out there, I think we should have this addressed in writing. To me, the home elevation project is just a Band-Aid on a far bigger problem. The new flood elevations that are coming down from FEMA in that area are putting a large area, the urban population in the south county, they'll be in the floodplain, the Whole Pocket area, the Laguna developments. And so something far bigger than the home elevation has to be done out there. And I think both the county and the city, and the city of Elk Grove, and the state have to get together and look at the big problem. And that will take, if that project ever gets built, it'll take care of a whole lot of these issues, and then you won't need home elevation and all these little Band-Aid projects that we've been doing. And I think the emphasis should be put on that, because like I say, there's thousands of homes in the pocket area that are impacted by this new flood elevation. So are you going to raise the levies higher? Are we going to raise the reclamation district levies higher? Are we going to do a project like the North Delta project that lowered the water surface elevation and benefited the whole area? And I think that's a lot wiser thing to do than this continually raising houses, levies, and such. So that's about all I have to say, except I would like these issues addressed. I think you talked about a number of them here today, but for clarification, takes some time, and I'd like them addressed in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the only card I have. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address this issue at this time?
Magworthy. I'm hearing, how can we flood and we show the water? If there is a caveat here that the government puts the money into this, and then we have that money not being used. Now, when money is not being used, money is money. And when money is not being used, it's set somewhere in a bank. Where the audit should show that now, if that money is not being used, we should be able to show the difference on a quarterly basis so that we can use that money to employ people into other things and to train folks. Now, when you talk about the flood, I had recommended alone the levy is you use the plastic pipes. Use the plastic pipes, and that will strengthen the lever all the way down to so many million gallons of water, when you need it back, pump it back over to the river, and it'll run wet, won't run. Now, that's some of the things, when you change this river from running here down by fourteen in the telephone company, and you put it over here, this is a problem that you have. You blocked a vein on that river. When you've got high-rise and blocking veins, you're going to have problems. Look at our wells. What do you have to refurbish a well other than suck the sand or punch it deeper? That's all. That's all you can do to a well. I grew up with wells. That's all you can do with wells, is suck the sand out or punch it deeper. And we've got all these problems of flooding and flooding and flooding, and you've got some language of what is flooding and what is not flooding. You should have this place packed with people here to hear what being said here today about flooding. We going to have flooding zones because you didn't utilize the core engineers when you was building. You know Elk Grove's a swamp, but you went on and built in it. You knew that all the time. Well, you go anywhere to the Delta, that's a swamp, because that's where you run that water for farming. People, please, try to get the public to understand what you're saying here today.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Nataoli.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one question, Mr. Booth, if I could. It has to do with the, I think Michael touched on it, but in the staff report on page seven, it talks about, of the one hundred and twenty-three addresses, talks about three-quarters or more of those being in different statuses. There is, could you clarify, because it came to me, and I mentioned this to Michael, that we don't show those numbers, and are these countywide versus Beachstone Lakes? And if they're Beachstone Lakes, can you just, we talk about twenty-six are on high ground, twenty-four haven't allowed staff in, twenty-five are currently in grant applications. Do we actually have twenty-five in the Beachstone Lakes area that are in grant applications?
Thank you, Don. I'm George Booth, Water Resources. There's a hundred and twenty-three houses that we, a hundred and twenty-three structures. So the rule on the Beachstone Lake flood insurance subsidy program from nineteen ninety-nine, the temporary program since nineteen ninety-nine, was that we would subsidize the flood insurance for the primary structure on any of the one hundred and twenty-three parcels in Beachstone Lake, which extends up to River Road, the little triangle area, south of Freeport, all the way down to and including RD 1002. And there's a hundred and twenty-three houses. I've reached out to every single property owner multiple times, and here's the current count. There are thirty-one who have sent me a statement of interest to elevate their house using a FEMA grant. There are twelve that need vents in order to significantly reduce their flood insurance. Several of them are working on that now, or they will do that. So the rule is, this is kind of a weird rule, but it's, you know, it's federal, so of course, it's a little bit off. The, if your floor is safely above the floodplain, but you don't have at least one square inch of flood vents in the foundation for every square foot of floor, then your insurance is rated as if the ground under your house is your lowest floor. So here's an example. There's an example on Point Pleasant Road, where I was able to help the couple add a vent, and it reduced their flood insurance from twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred and twenty, just by adding one vent. So, I mean, that's a win. We have...
Did you install it for them?
No, I don't want to be a blessing hog and do all the work. There are twenty-three homeowners out there who still have yet to allow us to survey the elevation of the floor, so we don't have any idea what they need. There are sixteen in what I call the other category. Some people, such as the church on, the Methodist Church is talking to us about a flood wall. Some people just simply need their basement filled. There are two houses that I'll be coming back to talk to you about pretty soon that we're considering raising with a Z. And some people want a flood wall, because...
You mean tearing them down, like what you're saying with a Z?
Yeah, well, I'll talk to you a bit later about that. And so I don't want to share addresses, because I don't think that's fair in a public forum, but yet. There are twenty-eight homes that don't even require flood insurance, but they're in the program. We're paying flood insurance for them. And there's thirteen more who I've reached out to multiple times who should elevate, but for one reason or another, I've actually spoken with several of them. You know, they don't want to do it, and that's fine. We're not forcing anybody. I'm not, certainly not overselling this program. It kind of sells itself for the people that are interested. And we did a town hall meeting, just side note, but we did a town hall meeting last Thursday in Hood, and twenty people signed up that night. I mean, that's how fast this is going. We, I think we're going to elevate a lot of houses with these grant programs over the next several years. Can I answer your question?
Yeah. I tried to write the numbers after you gave them, so if you could send a brief note, make sure I got it captured, the universe here. But again, I think it certainly reflects a lot of efforts on your part and those that assist you, and I appreciate you're very dedicated to it. I would just say that, you know, folks need to protect themselves, but even in the community of Hood, if all those folks raise their houses, you can imagine it's a pretty odd-looking landscape, because we're, what else, we're probably, what, at sixteen, eighteen, twenty-foot elevation there, and you had houses that are at ground level?
So the town hall meeting on Thursday was at the firehouse, and there's a newer home right across the street from the firehouse. It's properly elevated, and it's beautiful.
And it's on two and a half, three acres, too. That's the difference. I mean, you've got a township that's laid out in an old grid, and their houses are next to each other. So, I mean, ideally, it's, again, I'm not, again, we can debate that, but that house was new. That's probably the first, one of maybe two new houses in Hood in the last twenty-five years. And again, because they had property to build on. And I just think that, you know, it really alters the landscape, provides flood protection, I get it. But to the point that Walt made, and I think, you know, we do need to focus some of our efforts with the state. They decertified all... They decertified all those levies along the Sacramento River, and have put people in deep, deep floodplains by virtue of that. And the chances that we'll ever get levy improvements to the level of the protection that was once at least calculated, and I think is actually probably closer to the truth in 14-year protection, which to me is absolutely ridiculous, to think the levies along Sacramento River have now been, you know. But I would just, I think it's important, because again, we have communities, and the Carritos communities, and when you talk about raising houses, that means if people don't rebuild, then you've just depopulated a rural community by two less families. And that's, you know, not unimportant. And I would just say that, as someone who represents a large part of rural portions of this county, that having inhabitants, people who farm, who live, hopefully live in safety, and when we talk about that, it may address one issue, but I think it goes to the bigger fabric of communities like Hood and Point Pleasant and other Delta communities. And again, it takes nothing away from your good work, George, because I know you're very sincere and very committed, and you're helping people. But I would just say, that's always a consideration for this member of the board. And I think for those of us that talk about it, that, you know, you have communities made up of people who live there, raise their families there, and you want them to be safe, but you also want them to be vibrant, thriving communities. And if people leave there and never come back, then, you know, what's left? Anyway, that's all I had, George. Thanks for your, I don't have any other questions. And, Mr. Chair, I would just, you know, thank our staff for the report back. We have some questions here today. I think a lot of them go along the lines, because I'd had those discussions with Michael and with some of the folks, if we could get answers to those, and then maybe have a report back before the winter season on this, with I think, it's going to take a little bit of work for some of this information to be assimilated. But particularly on the funding, as I raised earlier, and Michael spoke to it, getting some clarity around that, because that helps to fuel some of what we want to try to do down in this area of the county.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? It's receive and file, and so we will have a report back in the future. Thank you. Now, if I move back, am I correct, to item 39?
Right. So now we're going to call in item 39, which is the Floren Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. Environmental determination is exempt. This is the approval of the Floren Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program and the new Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule. You are introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for Establishment of the Floren Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption. You're introducing a second ordinance amending Chapter 16.83, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, revising the Vineyard Fee Program boundaries, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption.
Okay, thank you. And I think since we actually heard the pretty extensive staff report this morning, that we should probably go directly to public comment, which Paul Petrovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board for allowing me to speak and go through the dynastics here. One just has to sit here for a few minutes and realize the scope and complexity of what you guys deal with, it's crazy. And I sit here, and I recognize the challenge that we're faced with, with infrastructure for the county, and how these fees are derived, and how we need them in order, or we need the improvements in order to meet general plan requirements, to not have our traffic levels below standard or at Level F. And I think there's even a mandate under some laws that you maintain it that way. So I'm not here to sit here and just complain about fees. That's not my goal. My goal is to bring a little bit of a real-world interpretation of what these fees mean to the entire 5,000 acres, including the land that I bought for $4 million 15 years ago, that I've been unable to develop. For the life of me, I don't know why the room was packed this morning. And I suspect I barely caught wind of this when it first hit the website. And I suspect there's going to be a lot of homeowners, and I think Mr. Natoli might know, Supervisor Natoli, I'm sorry, may know a lot of these property owners. And they're not sophisticated. They own ranchettes, and they've been holding on to these properties for generations. And I think I have the evidence to prove that what they thought was maybe going to be an inheritance, or what was going to be some equity in their land to pass on, what have you, is going to be gone. Because just for the residential alone, we're looking at $431,000 per acre, just in fees. That doesn't count anything else. On a shopping center, $36 per square foot. $36 a square foot. The average in the region is somewhere between 16 and 18. So what this fee program is doing, in essence, is wiping out, well, it's creating less, it's creating negative land value for most of the properties out there, if not all of them. And the goal of having these properties developed to create the money to improve the infrastructure won't occur. It certainly won't occur on any large scale. So I've been trying to bring this message forward, so that we all realize what we're doing here. And I think there's a simple analysis that can take place to deal with this and understand the impact. I think the way the fees have been derived was to take what is needed to be built, and then spread those fees out over the properties. But I don't think there's been an analysis of what a home would sell for, or what rents would be derived in a retail project, and do the reverse math, a reversionary analysis, to what it does to the land value. And I'm not talking about land value in the form of profit, but does the land value go below zero? And in my analysis, it does. Not by small amount, by many dollars per square foot, by hundreds of thousands per acre. And so we're all for infill. We're all for creating communities within existing boundaries. But this is going to do nothing but force more greenfield development. This is going to force more things to occur outside the boundaries of the gap plan. And without that reversionary analysis, I think, looking at this only from one direction of what it's going to take to solve some of these infrastructure problems, is short-sighted. Now, we happen to be in an upmarket right now. And Lennar is out there building, of course. But what is not known to many people is Lennar bought foreclosed lots at $10,000 per lot during the downturn. No one else has that opportunity anymore. So the first thing, I think, well, not the first, but one thing to consider is, if we want retail services to be included in this 5,000-acre plan besides the Walmart, there needs to be an adjustment, so this works. And retail's being devastated right now, as we know. There won't be any, I had Target interested, ready to go sign contract to purchase 10 acres on my 37 acres at Gerber and Elk Grove. And then the gap plan, I was asked to stop and be included in the gap plan. And that was 15 years ago. And so I'm sitting here now, Target's no longer interested. They haven't closed any stores, but they're not building any stores. So I'm relegated to, if it worked, 10,000-square-foot shop building, a gas station, God forbid, a fast-food pad. That's it. So as I pivoted and looked at alternative land uses for my 37 acres, I started to look at residential. And when I see the fees come in at $86,000 per home, in an area that is not Roseville, it's not Folsom, it's not the better parts of Elk Grove, where you have well-thought-out communities, where there's open space, where there are schools planned in a manner that work better than they do here, where they are near high-dollar, high-level-of-employment centers that people want to be part of. And those plans don't have existing housing stock that was built in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, that wasn't, that was done under a time period in the county where there wasn't a review process, a design review process. What it all equates to is you have lower home values for a finished new home that doesn't support the fee structure. Adopting a bad fee program right now, although getting something done to where some people can get some reimbursements, I think is extremely bad policy, and abdicating the responsibility of making sure this fee program works for all 5,000 acres going forward for the decades it's going to take to build it out. And that's going to include good economic times and bad. So the one simple request I have, we've waited this long, let's stop, it won't take long, to do an analysis from a reversionary analysis, to make sure all the people that have purchased land out there, or held on to it for generations, don't wake up a year from now and realize that they don't have any equity, and there's nobody buying their property, or if they're coming in, they're offering them a fraction of what it's worth, or was worth, and that there be some market input relative to what's right. Because this 5,000 acres will not ever be realized under this fee schedule. And that's speaking as a 40-year developer who understands these numbers inside and out. I did create a chart of the comparable retail. I don't know if that can be zoomed in on. And I created the existing permit fees per square foot for retail, and a few residential building fees. And basically, you can see the $86,280 for the Floren Vineyard Plan. And City of Woodlands, about $27,000. City of Sacramento, Crocker Village, it's $45,000 to $55,000, and those just went up from $35,000. So as you can see, it says $451,000 per acre, and that's at five per acre. And apartments don't pencil here, period. So again, I apologize for not being here this morning. I simply think there should be one more step in this analysis before it's adopted, and that is to run the numbers backwards and see where we end up.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Paul, sometimes when we go through these fees, you find out that different jurisdictions have different costs in the total. So it's hard for me, I mean, I believe what you wrote, different City of Sacramento, that they could be at roughly $40,000 a unit, and we're at 86. Others, that doesn't compute.
Well, I can address that.
Okay.
In areas like Roseville and other areas, you see much higher fees. But there are these well-planned communities that demand and get...
You always build well-planned communities, Paul.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Supervisor. I try. But the point is, if you think about Roseville and some of its areas, where there's those nice green belts with the trees and the streets that, you know, have a lot of landscaping, and they have entry features for each community, those homes sell for $800, $900,000. This part of the county will never see, well, in relative to today's value, I don't see that as being the market. And they can afford $75,000, $80,000 per house. But these fees are akin to having a master plan with all the streets, roads, everything built. On my property alone, I have another $3.5 million in frontage improvements, only which a few hundred thousand dollars is reimbursable under this plan. So I have another $3 million on top of these fees, just to start the in-tracks, just to start the onsite work. And most of the gap plan, of the Floren Vineyard Plan, is exactly that way. It's very rural in nature.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, I'm just looking at the city, I just, it's hard for me to understand that. I know they just did Delta Shores, I don't know if they updated their fee program for that. That's a huge development.
Even Sacramento County has lower fees in different areas.
Lower fees where?
For example, the retail in Fair Oaks, I'm sorry, Hazel Madison. I'm paid, if you look at the fourth line down, I paid $22 a square foot. But all the street improvements were in. All the utilities were there. Everything was done.
Yeah.
That's not the case here. So again, yes, 100%, you're a developer, you understand that apples and oranges are not always the case when people just blurt out fees. I think it's important, you're kind of making the point in that we need to look at the specifics of this plan, what the market is for these homes, and subtract from it the fixed hard cost of what it takes to build a home, what the fees are, what the architectural costs are, civil engineering. It's $40,000 to finish a lot today.
No, but you could, I mean, are you suggesting that we would have a view in building new neighborhoods, that this is in a nice area, so their fees are $86,000, and we know this is never going to be nice over here, so it's $40,000?
No. I'm saying to take the...
You're saying?
Comparable sales comps that exist in this area, and then subtract out the cost to build a home, or the cost to build retail at those rents. And you could compare them to Roseville, Folsom, Elk Grove, and do the same analysis, and see how the residual, the reversionary value is on the land. There's value in the land in those other communities. Here, it goes below and turns into a negative land value.
Okay. Well, I mean, asphalt costs the same, whether you're in the City of Sacramento, or Fair Oaks, or...
Yes. But the homes don't sell for the same amount. That's my point.
I mean, I understand that. I'd want to give Mr. Penrose an opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Supervisor, and thank you, Mr. Petrovich, for bringing your expertise to this topic. There are a number of things that clearly affect the obligation of development in different parts of the county, in terms of what its fair share and what its obligation should be. One of the, one significant issue here that you just were talking about is whether it's done in a city, or whether it's done in the unincorporated area of the county, has largely to do what the infrastructure obligation is that's tied to that development. And what I mean is that if you're building within a more urbanized area where a lot of the, I just want to bring that to the discussion, because you were kind of talking around it. And we are in greenfield area developments, where there is a pretty high burden for infrastructure development for these properties to be developed, frankly. And this plan, when it was developed many, many years ago, looked at all those things. And so it's actually identified, and Mr. Petrovich, I think, understands this too, but it's identified a specific set of infrastructure that needs to be built, so that this community will be a whole community. And you could debate what you think the level of this community is, but it brings with it this obligation, roads, parks, drainage. It's not just road widening. And the intent in this ultimate development out here is to be something that's pretty nice. I won't challenge it necessarily against, you know, one of these other communities. But, and those of you who were part of the original specific plan process out here, recognize that. And we continue to do that in the county. Frankly, the developing areas along 16 or Jackson Highway are all taking those into consideration. So in this particular area, there's an analysis that he suggested. As a counter to that, I just would like to highlight what I think we talked about a little bit earlier today, briefly. And that is, is that this specific plan area has an obligation to do certain things. All right? And so what this financing plan has done is it's valued those in current dollars as accurately as we could do, in other words, saying this is how much it's going to take to do these things, the cost, and then has, through an equitable, defensible methodology, applied the nexus-based burden for different types of development that happen in there in terms of what its fair share should be, I'll just use those terms. And that's what we see in the plan right now. If we wanted to do something that would reduce these fees in this area, it really would, it's going to boil down to a couple of things. One would be that you'd have to look at the plan area again and ask, is that financial, is the infrastructure obligation still the same? Which essentially means opening the project up again. Nobody who's gotten approvals down there has an interest in doing that, that I... Nobody who's gotten approvals down there has an interest in doing that, that I'm aware of. Where you might say, well, we don't now want to do a park, and now we don't want to do X, Y, and Z, right? And you change those entitlements. The other one would be to look for some additional revenue source outside of what this is, right? And to date, this plan has taken into consideration those elements where there might be other revenue sources that would help with some of the infrastructure, but it has not looked to replace substantially this obligation with some other money, Measure A money, general fund dollars, gas tax, you know, all those things, and you guys know kind of the cadre of those. So it's really saying you have to carry your own obligation in here. The other thing that I do want to highlight is, Mr. Petrovich has talked about his engagement with this plan development. There have been many developers that have been engaged in this planning process, the update of this, or, excuse me, the preparation of this financing plan. It's been going on for a couple of years. And right now, most of the people that were engaged in this process are at least at a point where they understand what the costs are, and to our knowledge, think that they can do some work. In other words, we don't have a whole bunch of the residential builders who have sat at this table, well, were sat through this process, standing up here as Mr. Petrovich is, and saying, I can't do anything. Right? Instead, what we've been hearing is, get it done. Right? We need this so that we can progress the balance of our projects out here. The last thing I want to highlight is that right now, there's an interim fee in place, because there's the conditions, there's obligations, and we don't have a financing plan, a fee essentially, in place. So instead, what we had to introduce is we had to introduce an interim fee. So anybody who wants to develop out there now has to enter into an interim financing fee.
Interim fee agreement.
Interim fee agreement. And we have some people who have done that. The number, or the costs in the interim financing or interim fee agreement is higher than what we brought forward here. So I'm trying to highlight is just that, in this effort over the past year, a year and a half, there's been a lot of work to try and do what can be done to reduce the cost to the finance plan, but make sure that the infrastructure gets built. So it's actually, if we don't take action on it today, and somebody wants to develop, and Mr. Petrovich, I think, is saying, he thinks people won't want to develop, and I'm not going to debate that parcel by parcel, but if somebody does want to develop, they've got to come in for the interim fee program, and they're going to actually have to pay higher fee, right? Than what, if we adopt this now, what they would pay to go forward with the plan as it is. So I just wanted to kind of give you all those elements without specifically, you know, challenging one economic analysis, you know, or another one, so.
I do think it would be interesting, I think he called it a reverse analysis, to, in the cost of a house in that area, determine how much of it was fees. And it appears to me it's going to be over $100,000 by the time, you know, planning and everybody else gets done. And then we hear that people can't afford a house, and, you know, all of those things. On the other hand, you know, they got to pay, the asphalt and the parks have to come from somewhere. So, it's a tough discussion, and I, you know, I don't know. This governor seems to be interested in housing, maybe he'll subsidize it.
And Supervisor Peters, I don't know exactly all these developers that are saying, let's just go, but I can assure you, they're most likely, my instincts tell me, and I know Lennar is one of them, and probably the biggest, they didn't pay hardly anything for their land, and they're working on an upcycle. And as far as the future, when that land runs out, there's going to be a whole different landscape out here, a whole different environment. And I know this board's decision is not to create a plan that doesn't work for the future, and I know it doesn't want to create a fee structure that will never generate the majority of the money that the plan said it needs to. It just won't happen, in my opinion.
Okay.
And I think the reversionary analysis is a worthwhile exercise. It'd take, I'd be happy to help, I'll bring in some home builders, and it'll take 10 days, two weeks, to show what the net land residual is.
Supervisor Nativi.
Yeah, I would thank Paul for his comments here today, and certainly respect his business acumen, and certainly his demonstrated ability to, you know, build and deliver on, you know, many fine projects, certainly in the region. And I would just say, you know, even before Paul purchased this land, probably some 20, 22 years ago, I remember sitting with county staff at the time and looking at North Vineyard Station, which was before us, but also some of the development properties that were kind of segregated in different spots, where you didn't really have the critical mass and the floor and vineyard gap as to, you know, what it would take to put together a specific plan, what it would take to put a financing plan. And we were still in the, you know, early iterations and considerations of the North Vineyard Station piece, but, and I remember clearly on a whiteboard in one of the conference rooms upstairs, and, you know, folks that were in development mode at that time, actually bringing the land for, you know, a specific plan forward and zoning and so forth. And the two big ticket items were drainage and roads, relative to where it would be different than maybe in other areas of the, unincorporated area or other parts of the county. But I think there also was an emphasis, and I think, Paul, to your point about quality, and again, I would emphasize, I think this board's take on that, and certainly my view of it, is that whatever we ultimately approve and hopefully gets built, that it be of a quality, that you have the quality schools, and you have the parks, and you have the green space areas and the trails, and you have the road capacity to meet the, you know, the current anticipated demand, and that you do it in a way that, you know, and you heard the discussion a moment ago about drainage, where downstream, you know, there's a portion of this area that pays part of that fee, because, you know, it's a long ways from floor and vineyard gap to Point Pleasant, but that's in the same watershed. And so, I think over the years, we certainly haven't perfected it, but I, nonetheless, as we've looked at all those things, and you, you know, and then school fees, you know, are what they are, and Elk Grove Schools have a tremendous reputation, and, but building those new school plants costs, you know, new high school, middle school, costs you, I don't know, it can cost you, you know, $40, $50 million to put a, to put a plant in. And the financing mechanisms here, I mean, as you all know, in Laguna and so forth, and even some of the areas in West Vineyard time, they were using Meloroos as well. That vehicle's not used as much anymore, there's some CFDs, Community Facilities Districts. But it all gets passed on in the cost of a home, and/or either in the cost of the mortgage, or what people are going to be obligated to pay over time, and certainly the commercial development bears that as well. I guess my point being, and I think Mike Penrose touched on it, is that, you know, certainly it's a stark number, in fact, I did that math this morning when we saw those numbers, you know, the RT5 was at $86,000, and you just go five times that on an acre on a typical development, and it's exactly the number you brought forward. And yet, I guess we could spend a lot of time here, and it might be with the development community, but also folks that, who are going to reflect, I think, their voices, is that what are the expectations for community amenities? Even though the housing price, to your point, if it's a price point is such that people can't afford the house, and I guess it doesn't get built, and you don't get the commercial properties behind it. But I'm not willing to sit here now or ever and say that, you know, those neighborhoods, just because they're in an area that, you know, we were challenged, because it was a rural area with a one-mile grid for roads, and there were, it was overland flow for drainage, and there weren't, you know, any schools to speak of, and park districts that have to build as they go, no libraries in the immediate area, all those things. But I'm not willing to say that, you know, well, in order to get a, you know, a different price point, I guess you don't get that open space along the, you know, on Gerber Creek, or you don't get that trail, or your school, you know, you're going to be bused somewhere else, or you don't get that school with those amenities. And those are choices, but they don't come without a cost, and I think that's your point. I mean, and again, you've talked with me about this, and I'm sympathetic to it. And yet, for the homeowner, I think to have those knowns, if they can afford the home and/or to develop the business property, to know those schools are going to be delivered, that those roads will be hopefully widened, you know, either concurrently or even sometimes in advance of the development, and that we get those amenities in there so that you do have that quality. Again, it may not be the price structure you see in other areas, but I would want nothing less for those areas, recognizing that the land valuation, and I, again, I understand your point, that folks who want to sell a five-acre parcel of ground, if you've got developer A's looking at buying that, or builder, and you're already in at $400,000 plus an acre just for-
Fees.
The fees, and then the other sunk cost is that, you know, what sort of residual value, to your point, is left there? And I don't know that, I mean, but, you know, but if the market flattens out or goes down, then I think things will sit. And again, you've held on to your ground for 15 years, and so I think we could certainly do the analysis, but, you know, I guess I would challenge folks, say, okay, if we want the amenities, and they're important to communities both here and now, but for the future generations, and they need to be paid for, and there's no other alternative source to Michael, so what do we do? And you're the folks that build and bring in the, you know, the commercial activity, and, you know, in some cases, residential activity, and many others. You know, that's worthy of a discussion here before this board, you know, maybe on multiple occasions, but I guess I don't see any easy way to get there in light of what we're challenged with, I guess you can say the area doesn't develop at all, and-
That's my point, is the revenue won't be generated. What's hard to understand, too, and I learned this lesson through the development of Crocker Village, there's only about 10 public home builders doing business. Ones that are really active in this region are five to six. They're not based out of Sacramento. So they look at the entire US, and they put a pin in the areas that work economically. This won't be one of them. This 5,000 acres won't be one of them. And so you're not going to see the fee generation to create the nice community, or at least get it to a minimum standard. It just won't happen. And I hate to be the sole person in front of you telling you this, but I happen to be an educated one. And I, it's frustrating, because, yeah, my one property is 37 acres out of 5,000. But it kind of represents an important piece of that whole thing, because it's the only property for regional services or community services. If you're all familiar with Plumas Lake, those people are having to drive great distances to get services. You know, they're having to go to Yuba City, now this might not be as bad, they go down to Calvine. But my point is, communities are built off of having walkable neighborhoods, interconnectivity, service, quality services, and it's, you're not going to see the revenue here. And I think 10 years from now, we're going to be sitting here revisiting these fees, saying, what are we going to have to do to make this 5,000 acres work? And why not deal with it now? Why not look at a reversionary analysis and say, well, at least we made this decision knowing that there's zero or negative land values here, and we don't expect this money to come in, because no one's selling their land for zero, or willing to pay somebody to develop it. Quite honestly, I'll probably take mine, get it appraised, and deed it to a church. You know, take the write-off. I mean, that's what we're faced with here, which I've been doing lately in some areas that just don't make sense.
I guess, Paul, I guess I would just pose the question, and I don't expect you to have the answer, I certainly don't, I kind of stated in my previous comment, but it's, so, recognizing that, is that, you know, you might be able to sharpen your pencil a little bit here and there, but, you know, to the point that if it costs, to what Susan said, you know, if it costs X for asphalt, and it's going to cost more next year, it costs you, in private side, public side, we know we got all the things that compounded for us. In fact, we have a hard time sometimes with some of the business, just, you know how long it's taken to work that you're going to see out there this year? That Elk Grove flooring widening with the bridge, we've been working on it for 20-plus years. Remember, 1998, they said, well, we're going to maybe do it next year, so.
Well, Supervisor, I would just say that people are going to be incentivized to go further out. They're going to be incentivized to go further away.
But how's that become cheaper? You got to get water and sewer and parks and schools to them, how's that, just because of the land price? I mean, I don't get-
Woodland is becoming the residential community for Davis. There are developments that are occurring all around here, people are going way out to the, Plumas is exploding right now, even though it doesn't have services, because you can buy a home for a family for $400,000, because their fees are not that high.
You get that price point, though, right there in Vineyard, you can get, you know, fairly a nice home for $400,000 in that rate.
Existing.
And some of the new stuff out there is going for that.
Okay, so you have $100,000 in permit fees, and then you subtract another $40,000 for the finishing the lot, so now you're at 140 out of that 400. The building's going to cost you 125, 130 bucks a square foot. It doesn't work. I'm sorry, I didn't-
No, we're not debating, I just, again, it's one of those things, is that, you know, what do we give on if-
Well, it's not a matter of giving up, but you're not giving on anything, because I don't think the infrastructure's going to occur. So, I've said my piece, I have a way out. I think there's going to be a lot of people that aren't going to realize any value for their land. And thank you for listening, unless you have any more questions of me.
Mr., I would just say that, you know, if a week would give time to do some analytics, you know, again, this certainly could roll a week, but I mean, I don't know what else, you know, we had the discussion here, but again, social deference to you, obviously, his property is in the-
Yeah, but it's a bigger issue than that property.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it is. I get it, there's 5,000 acres in that plan area alone, so.
Okay, let's talk about that in a moment. Supervisor Frost.
Mike, you went back and did some creative things with the Alberta specific plan, is there, but what you're saying is, in order to do that, you'd have to go back and revisit it, and take things out, and there's no way to work with him in some way to help pencil it?
Specific to his site, there may be some details, some minor things that could be done that might affect his cost, but not really from the fee structure perspective, which is really what he's talking about now. Because he actually may do something different with the property, is one thing he's considering in terms of its zoning and stuff, that could change the economics, it still may not make it-
That's why I'm here, because my pivot point is to residential, which doesn't work. That's why I did the analysis. That's why I'm here mainly talking about residential, because commercial's off the table at this point in any large degree.
And I didn't mean to give that necessarily up, that's just something he's been considering at that specific site. But in the context of this plan, this approved plan area, the obligations related to it, we have done a pretty thorough job of making sure that we're building the correct infrastructure at the best cost or the best price that can be applied, and in distributing, as I said, those costs. The work that we did in Alberta were things that did not go against what the project conditions were, right? So to the extent that there may be a way to look at minor things that could, that could maybe slightly affect the cost, we may be able to do that, and on a project-by-project basis, we've been able to do a little bit of that, like an attached sidewalk versus a detached, or some of those types of things. But not enough to really change the economics of what we're talking about at this point.
And I want the board to know, I'm not here to argue for my property.
Yeah.
I think we understand.
My property doesn't, retail won't happen if there's no homes, but I'm looking, I'm just trying to make it-
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So there's a couple-
There won't be revenue to do what's programmed.
There's just some related things, too, that I wanted to just put in front of the board today as it relates to this decision. One of them is that we do have builders that are building, and Mr. Petrovich knows of some of them, he's identified one at least, and we haven't done a check against everybody's, you know, initial land in, which is legit, right? How much you paid at any given time. The other thing, though, that I think is just important to understand, that if this process gets delayed, it does have a related impact that is not necessarily a showstopper, but we are looking to approve this financing plan to allow then a contribution from the plan, it's collected fees through these interim agreements that I already told you, they're being held, to allow us to expend those fees for the Elk Grove floor and road widening bridge project. So if this gets continued too far, and I would present that if it gets continued past the schedule we're on right now, it likely will put that project at risk just for a season. Supervisor Nativi identified that we've been at it for a heck of a long time, it's ready to go, but there's a little bit of a domino there. I just want people to understand that as it relates to this particular action that we're taking today. If it did get continued a week or two weeks, it very well could affect our ability to bid that project, so, that's all, so.
And I think that's short-sighted.
So you think, so you think two weeks would delay, significantly delay a project like that?
If we went one, maybe two weeks, we'd probably be okay. DOT is basically, has been looking at the, you know, the scheduling for them to be able to advertise, they set it for the 21st, hoping that that would then allow enough time to bid and award and begin it. It just, we're getting really late in the years, all. I don't want to overdramatize that issue, but I wanted you to know what-
Supervisor Frost, are you done?
Yes, I was just trying to figure out if there's anything we could do, more we could do.
So, I guess here's where I'm at. And again, I'm not talking about the 37 acres, it's a much bigger issue than that, though those 37 acres are incredibly important to me. Is, and I, in order to do something that, whether it's what Mr. Petrovich is saying, or just take one more pass at this thing, we don't have to start over, correct?
It depends, so, I'm sorry to be less clear on that. If we do, if we go through a reverse analysis, as he's suggesting, and at the end of the day, we say, based on the economics that he has put into the equation, that something can't go forward, then presumably we'd have the option to say, well, we're not going to approve it, or we're going to go ahead and approve it, because there are some who have said that they would go forward, they may not- who have said that they would go forward, they may not be using the economics that he's using.
Right.
That's a possibility. But if we are going to go back and look into the plan and say, what can we do that will reduce the fees, which is, I think fundamentally, the point he's trying to get to here, because even if you do a reverse analysis or not, project by, parcel by parcel, then it will open up the process, is my only point.
I, I understand that, but, you know, if Mr. Petrovich is correct in his analysis, and I don't have any reason to believe he is or isn't at this point.
What are the other developments?
Yeah, we are in an incredible catch-22 moment here. I mean, we always are with development, you know, we need the infrastructure, but if, if we are pricing ourselves out of the market, then we're never going to see either the development or the amenities. And, and I am now less comfortable than I was this morning that I have that answer.
At least know where you're going, whether it works or not.
The problem, I mean, I am with you, the problem I see is that it sounds like we would have to reduce the fees by fifty percent, really, right?
And to back up what Supervisor Peter said, we already get complaints about poor infrastructure, if not lack of infrastructure.
I know you too well to make that call, but I'm right there with you.
Dumming down the program doesn't make me thrilled either.
Right, but I guess to the point, if we're off by fifty percent, then my God, maybe we ought to redo it, because absolutely
I'm not suggesting we are, but I'm saying
I know.
But you're saying, in order to be able to sell a house, it's got to be, I mean, if Roseville was at, what was it, thirty thousand or something?
Not Roseville, it's Woodland, but, and I'm trying to take comparable areas, I'm not trying to take these beautiful diamond-plated, gold-plated communities, but if the house value is really four hundred or four fifty or five hundred, like Supervisor Natoli indicated, that's easy math. It's real easy math. I don't think this thing breaks even with these fees until you get to six fifty to eight hundred thousand, depending on the size of the house. And one thing I guarantee you, these fees go forward, you're going to end up with the lowest quality homes in the county, because there will be no money to build anything but stucco ranch houses with no amenities, with no curb appeal, with no quality of construction. And that is a dangerous slope to go down, because now you have communities that in ten, fifteen years are blighted, and it all comes out of the building at that point. I know that with retail. That's something else to consider in this whole process.
I just think we don't know what the answer is.
So if I can, I'm sorry to keep coming back and forth, but we, there have been a number of real builders that have been a part of this whole outreach process up to today. They were aware of what this fee plan was and did not come out in objection to it. They did earlier, frankly, when we, when we hadn't resolved some total fees, but there was additional work that brought those down. And I just wanted to highlight who some of them are, and then maybe we can talk a little bit about what, you know, what your preference
And in fairness, we did go through some of that exercise already, I mean, particularly when Mr. Petrovich had some numbers that he had produced earlier, that you and I had some
But they don't own the rest of the five thousand acres, they already own their own parcels. So it's, you've got to look at it from, okay, now we're going to go out and buy land, track.
Yeah, and so I just wanted to highlight some, I'm not trying to overstate their position necessarily, but Taylor Morrison's in it, Bayless is there, Evergreen Properties, Gardner Park, Tim Lizzie, I think it is, Tim Lou, Castleman South, they're all property owners in that area, they were all part of the outreach process and tracked it all the way through. To date, they were aware this was going to be here and were supportive of it. I can't say that, that you normally get the development community coming in saying, charge a fee to me. But I do want to be clear that it was, it was, there was a pretty thorough outreach to, at least we believe, some people who think the economics work, for whatever reason. That's my only point, and, and the land value thing is different. Lennar, we know is okay with this. And in fact, they're paying these kind of fees and making it work. So that, that's one thing. If we, if, if the board wanted to keep this on a schedule, if there's any reason that you'd want to hear from other people besides Mr. Petrovich, you know
We could still do that between now and the second
It's possible, I don't know. I just know that there's people who think this works for whatever their reasons are, otherwise they'd be here.
My counterargument to the people that are already developing their own land is that they will have no competition.
Okay.
They just won't.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Is there any other questions, issues on this? Is there a will of the board?
Mr. I, you know, again, I don't know what one week gets anything, except for I don't, would hate to see the Elk Grove floor and South Watt project delayed another year because of a week or two. I don't know that a week, if the twenty-first, we'd be back here on the twenty-first. So if you think there's any
I agree.
Value, and you can certainly have others come in and talk to us. Again, you know, I'm prepared, as I was this morning, I, you know, again, I'm not unsympathetic, and certainly Paul had visited with me previously some week, some, you know, time ago about this. Again, I think we've all said it, I don't, you know, I don't see any, not just easy answers, I'm not sure what the answers are. I mean, again, you know, if we have a certain level of expectation, I mean, and again, I would hope that the housing quality reflects, you know, the pride in the neighborhood as well. I mean, again, I'm not, you know, and I, so we have design review, but it doesn't necessarily dictate what's being built, but, so, again, if you think seven days, I could do that, we could
Is there a way we could pull that, was it a bridge, project?
The way that we could pull it?
An interchange. The project you say that will get delayed for a year.
No, it's, it's a bridge and a road widening between Gerber and Floren.
Yeah, okay, could we pull that out and make it subject to these fees, and then debate the housing fees later? I don't know.
What, what we need to have happen is there's been fees that have been collected through the interim agreements, there's been development out here, so those fees are in a revenue source, right?
Also, the proposal that's being worked on with the Department of Transportation is to do an interfund borrowing, which would borrow money from the Vineyard Plan, several million dollars, to this plan, to pay this plan's contribution to the Elk Grove floor and project, and without having this plan being in place as a repayment source, then that part of the financing could not happen.
That's a lot more clarity. Thank you, Bob.
But is there some accommodation, I guess Susan's question is, is that, you know, with a, you know, a revised resolution that would, you know, allow more than a week for discussion to allow a project to go forward, recognizing this plan, you know, I don't know, or is it all, is it all a domino, and if you don't do X in this way, then Y doesn't follow?
The only thing we're toying with right now is whether we could look to another plan to do the interfund borrowing with. The thing that makes this work is that that infrastructure's included in this plan, right? As, as a qualifying expenditure, so that's why it was coming from the Vineyard Plan into this, to be, to get across.
What if we did a transportation development fee portion of this? That's, that's, I guess, I don't know if there's any water res money in there because of the bridge, but it's the TDF, and the fees coming for transportation that's key to that project we're talking about, right?
That's correct.
Could you do that?
What I'd rather do, rather than try and establish a different financing mechanism here for that specific project, I just wanted to highlight that if this gets delayed, the one that we have in place, I think we'd have got to go back and do additional work to determine if there would be another way to get money across. This was the logical one, because of the reasons that I just briefly talked about.
And I think there's some park reimbursements that are waiting, people are standing in line for, maybe other infrastructure as well, so, I mean, there's some other things that are, again, dominos, I get that, so, again, I'm not looking for any major delay, I would just tell you, I mean, you know, because, again, I don't know what the answers might be, and
Well, and I will say that, I mean, I, I am responsible for us hearing it today and not weeks ago already, so, you know, I took that time to do a lot of this homework, including talk with Mr. Petrovich and staff extensively, so at this point, I am prepared to make staff recommendation, to move for staff recommendation.
All right. I'd second that.
Okay. As I understand it, then, sorry to interrupt, but we, we do need to go back through the adoption of these
The public hearing, and all, do we have to go through all that again?
If we can have our slide back up from cable
What's that?
I'm asking cable folks to put the slide back up.
Well, in the meantime, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who has not yet addressed this issue that would like to? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
So we're coming back with repeating the same actions again as this morning, adopting the resolution to approve the Flooding Vineyard Community Plan Fee Program, adopt resolution to approve the SETDF fee for the Flooding Vineyard Community Plan, introduce a new ordinance for the, in the county code for the Flooding Vineyard Fee Program, and continue for adoption to May twenty-first, and amend ordinance for the county code for the Vineyard Program and introduced, and continue for adoption to May twenty-first.
Thank you.
You made a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, and I just hope this is not a he-told-us-so moment, so.
Well, and this is not the, this is not the end of the discussion, so, by any means.
In what way?
In, in, when these projects are coming forward, I am going to, particularly in that particular area, do everything I can to make sure that our pencils are as sharp as they can possibly be.
Okay. It's in yours and Don's district.
Yeah.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thanks for the discussion, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you again.
Okay, I'm afraid I have not finished. There are two more speaker sheets on items that are actually farther in the, on the agenda, and both are from Mr. Macworthy, so Mr. Worthy, I'm going to ask you to come up and address item fifty-three and fifty-eight concurrently, and I'm going to give you three minutes to do so.
I'm not going to grumble, because I get this all the time. Fifty-three is just what you've all been discussing here. When the government owns those entities, they feed you to death. Now, I felt government got something to say about utilities going up, and there's never been audit of finance where that money go from smother. You got a program over here, goes right back to what I said, your housing going to wind up to be the shits, because when those monies quit going out, and what these people here saying about the cost, I said right there Saturday past, Wells Fargo dropped five million dollars in Sacramento, people, don't you buy no house now with nothing down on it. Get some money to invest. Where is your house that you got equity? Borrow that equity now while it's up, because you're going to file property in this town, go fall flat on its face, just like it did when Ron Beavers from Elk Grove hung a union home loan at Arden Fair. The judge got involved or overappraised. It's going to happen again. If you got, anybody got equity, I tried to show them, get a broker together, especially my people. Everybody got fifty thousand dollars in equity, parlay it together and build that low-income housing, and you got a revenue, a supplement income. But where it going now? Fees, from what I hear today, fees is the only way this city can function, of additional fees. Fees, fees, fees. And you got money sitting that you're not even using, and you ask people, say, what's the interest? Look at you. No transparency on money that's been provided out here. That's really, I'm going to stick to Donald Trump, these things will come back of the infrastructure? There's no audit on how much of the infrastructure have been completed, and I want to see that money amort, because the sale tax money is not amort. You can use it for anything you want to use it, that going to be a disgrace in the city, because Elk Grove going to take so many million dollars from your sale tax.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
And we have comments of the county executive?
No, no.
Board members?
I have one brief one. Nav, I mentioned this to you in briefing, that these reports of our levees that are being dug into by transients that are camped out there, either on top or on the sides, needs to be addressed in some way. I don't know what the right way is, but I'm asking you to get OES and SAFCA and the Reclamation District, and probably the Sheriff's Department and other policing agencies, if necessary, together, and along with county councils' recommendations, and see what can be done so that the people who enforce the laws know exactly what they can do, because this is a matter of public safety, and it's an awkward one to be, to be sure, but I think we need to address this before it gets out, any more out of hand.
Look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? Oh, that's it, Madam Clerk?
That's it?
Good job, Mr. Turner.
Are you sure?